And the city has made several avenues available for the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. Meeting is available to the public on the city's YouTube channel, gov.pdx, www portlandoregon.gov/ video, and Channel 30, of course, if you're watching this, you probably know that. The public can also provide written testimony to council by emailing thecouncilclerk@cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. The council is taking these steps as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact and to promote physical distancing. The pandemic is an emergency that threatens the public health, safety, and welfare, which requires us to meet remotely by electronic communications. Thanks again, everybody, for your patience, your flexibility, and your understanding as we manage through these challenges to conduct the city's business. And with that, we'll hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at PortlandOregon.gov forward-spaced auditor contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony while the city council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being placed on hold or ejected from the remainder of the electronic meeting. Please be aware that all council meetings are recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. First up is Communications.
Number, item 252, request of Melanie Plaut to address council regarding Zenith Energy.
Good morning, Melanie.
Good morning. My name is Melanie Plaut. It rhymes with sauerkraut. I'm a retired physician. I currently volunteer as a vaccinator at the Oregon Convention Center, and I testify today as a volunteer with 350 PDX. With apologies to the mayor and Commissioner Hardesty, I'd like to spend a minute on the history of Zenith. I particularly direct this to Commissioner Ryan. As BDS can with one action, align itself with Portland residents and stop Zenith from bringing crude oil trains through our neighborhoods, storing the oil in huge tanks near Forest Park, and sending it out via our rivers to refineries and other states. You might ask, why do those of us concerned about global warming, community health and safety injustice hate Zenith so much? First, tar sands from Canada, like thick peanut butter, is excavated by the most climate-intensive and destructive process of any fossil fuel. Their other oil product, Bakken Crude, is highly explosive and is the type of oil that almost caused a huge tragedy in 2016 when a train derailed in Mosher. We don't want to be accomplices. Second, Zenith was able to slink into town due to a weakened siloed regulatory structure. Their DEQ air quality permit dates back to 2007, when the facility was handling asphalt, and yet somehow still applies to a totally different operation. Permits for new equipment built in 2018 date to 2014, before Zenith purchased the facility and before this council passed the 2016 ban on new fossil fuel infrastructure. Exploiting various loopholes, Zenith was able to sneak their crude business into our city without any public input. Third, hundreds of car-long oil trains put our neighborhoods at risk. Multnomah County reports that more than a quarter of the population lives within the half-mile evacuation zone around train routes, that 108 schools and 100 childcare facilities are within this zone, and that people of color are more likely to live in this zone. Fourth, Zenith has been less than honest with regulatory agencies and has shown disdain for community safety. They performed a required spill-response drill with an easier-to-clean-up product diesel than what they were actually handling. Their emergency response manager lived four hours from the site. They lied to DEQ in '28, claiming that their new infrastructure would not, quote, "increase crude oil throughput", when in fact crude transport increased more than tenfold. The people of Portland have expressed their strong opposition to Zenith's crude oil business since it started in 2018. Multiple testimonies, meeting with council staff, petitions, public forums, a 60-hour vigil, and a garden built on the tracks were all attempts to stop Zenith from using our city for its crude export business. The city faces many difficult problems. I extend my thanks and sympathies to you who have to solve them, but this is an easy one. BDS can and should deny Zenith the land use compatibility statement, which DEQ has determined to be necessary for their upcoming Title V air quality permit. And for the future, we suggest you create a process whereby the public can have input into the granting of a Lux. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Melanie. Appreciate it. Also, thanks for being, uh, thanks for being there at the Convention Center, helping with the vaccination. We really appreciate that.
You bet.
Next up, we have item 253, request of Dr. Kelly O'Hanley to address council regarding Zenith Oil Terminal.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear. You sound great. Good morning to you.
My name is Dr. Kelly O'Hanley. By way of self-introduction, I'm a physician with a public health degree who has taught at Harvard and Stanford universities. Over the coming weeks, you will hear testimony about the many hazards posed by Zenith Terminal and its transport. I anticipate you will feel more than justified to deny it permits. If not, and I pray this is not the case, I ask that at least you proceed with the city's stated plan to begin requiring the fossil fuel industry to provide financial assurances against possible damages. I realize that some members of the council were not serving when the city, along with Multnomah County, took the first step in implementing a polluter pays approach. It co-funded a study to quantify the public health and safety risks posed by the fossil fuel industry. That study should be coming out in June. It will help establish the amount each fossil fuel entity should pay, including Zenith, in the form of bonds or other financial assurances to ensure that taxpayers are not on the hook when things go wrong. The money collected could help fund efforts to harden stormwater systems and protect drinking water supplies. Likewise, we could enhance public health capacity to deal with heat waves and wildfire smoke that are increasingly occurring due to climate change, which is being, of course, fueled by the fossil fuel industry. But please allow me to back up. Of course, the city requires building contractors and others to post bonds against possible, quote-unquote, mishaps. However, nationally and internationally, the fossil fuel industry has managed to weasel out of financial responsibility for disasters. Cases in point are the Lock-Mogg and Peak Train derailment and the oil refinery disasters in Texas. In spite of billions of dollars in damage, the train companies and refineries respectively were allowed to declare bankruptcy and walk off scot-free. It was taxpayers, along with local citizens and businesses, who were left holding the bag. Adding insult to injury, allowing fossil fuel businesses to externalize costs gives them an unfair advantage over renewable sources of energy. Worst of all, today's fossil fuel industry is making, quote-unquote, "bank" while passing on the cost of climate change to further generations. This has all got to stop. Portland City Council, follow through on your commitment to enact a fossil fuel risk bond policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Next up, we have item 254, request of Ann Turner to address council regarding Zenith Energy. Ann, are you able to unmute?
She just re-muted herself.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we hear you.
Okay, sorry. Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners, my name is Dr. Ann Turner. I'm a primary care physician who worked in a community health center, serving vulnerable families, and I'm a member of Oregon Physicians for Social Responsibility. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about Zenith Energy. Zenith, as you know, brings oil trains from the Bakken and Tar sands fields through Portland, spewing diesel fumes into some of our most vulnerable neighborhoods. Zenith now must finally, as Melanie pointed out, obtain its own Title V air quality permit from DEQ. And to apply for that permit, Portland City Council, you must agree that Zenith's operations are compatible with Portland's land use goals. So according to the city in its 2020 Clean Air Healthy Climate Proposal, quote, "Portlanders breathe the dirtiest air in Oregon." Nearly 40% of Black Indigenous and people of color who live in Portland live within 1.2 miles of the city's biggest sources of air pollution, unquote. One of these sources of air pollution is diesel exhaust from the oil trains bound for Zenith. Diesel contains more than 40 hazardous air pollutants and causes at least 168 premature deaths in Oregon each year. Diesel's a known carcinogen and is linked to heart attacks and stroke, increases the risk of asthma, cognitive, and neurodevelopmental impairments, and birth anomalies. Children, the elderly, individuals with pre-existing conditions, and workers are the most vulnerable, and these conditions are more common in economically disenfranchised minority communities. As Melanie pointed out, the amount of oil transported in 2019 was 10 times greater than that in 2018, following the construction of 32 new rail offloading terminals. And despite the fact that, this is in spite of the fact that Zenith had stated that this construction would not result in additional throughput. This is another, an example, as Melanie pointed out, of why Zenith cannot be trusted. Portland has already enacted a ban on new fossil fuel infrastructure, declared a climate emergency, and proposed taxing industries, including Zenith, that pollute our air and contribute to climate change. Isn't Zenith, isn't allowing Zenith to operate and expand its activities contrary to the efforts the city has already taken towards our local and global climate crisis? Zenith's current operations do not meet the goals of making Portland a vibrant and livable city for all its residents, including low-income and BIPOC communities. Zenith's operations are not land use compatible with a healthy Portland. Please use your power to stop Zenith from polluting our air and endangering our health and safety. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Ann.
Next up, we have item 255, request of Solomon Duke to address council regarding Zenith Energy.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify before the council today. My name is Solomon Duke, and I'm a youth from Portland who has spent several years speaking out against Zenith Energy. When I was a senior in high school, I spoke on behalf of the Portland Youth Climate Council at Zenith Community Forums, my synagogue, and the Portland City Council. I have seen the Zenith Energy expansion site, participated in blocking the tracks, and have had dear friends and mentors arrested for defending our health. Unfortunately, since then, my fears have become reality. Zenith Energy expanded its ability to unload oil cars by 400%, placing the health of our city and planet at risk. Back then, the city said that their hands were tied. This is no longer the case. We have already passed the Fossil Fuel Infrastructure Ordinance, 100% Renewable Energy Resolution, the Climate Emergency Declaration, and the city has claimed further goals to combat fossil fuels. Zenith Energy is not in line with the city's goals. I am now in my second year studying energy science and technology at Western Washington University. Along with energy, I am also studying sustainability through the Climate Leadership Certificate Program. I can tell you firsthand that tar sand oil is not sustainable. Furthermore, transportation by rail is extremely dangerous. This winter, a 108-car oil train filled with highly flammable Bakken crude oil derailed just north of my school in Bellingham. Fortunately, no one was killed. Zenith is transporting Bakken too. If an accident occurs, millions of dollars of infrastructure could be destroyed and disproportionately harm people of color and children who live near the tracks. There are 108 schools and 100 childcare facilities within the half-mile evacuation zone, and the chemicals and oil being transported are toxic, flammable, and explosive. Deny Zenith Energy its land use compatibility statement and keep Portland safe. Protect the children in the nearby schools and childcare facilities. Protect the nearby wildlife and protect our crying climate. We must act now. Every summer and fall that fires ravage across Oregon and the skies blackened by a blanket of smoke and ash, I fear for the ruby red robins and their baby blue eggs. I fear for the Douglas firs who guard our forests like knights in wooden armor. I fear for the lives of every single child, sibling, parent, and family member who lives in danger at no fault of their own. Do not let these fears become reality. Stop Zenith.
Thank you, Solomon.
Next up, we have item 256, request of Sophie Cash to address council regarding Zenith Oil Terminal.
Hi, Sophie.
Hi, folks. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Thank you so much. Thanks, council members, for the opportunity to speak before you. My name is Sophie Cash. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm a young person representing Sunrise Movement PDX, which is part of a youth-led climate justice coalition across the whole country. When I moved to Portland two years ago after college, I was so proud to live in a city that had established such bold climate commitments, ones that other speakers have enumerated. But though I'm unemployed, instead of job hunting, I'm now writing and delivering testimony. Testimony on a topic that scares and confuses as much as it angers me. The folks before me have wonderfully listed the reasons city council should protect our communities by rejecting new air and land permits for Zenith Energy, so I'll just go over a few. Zenith, like all fossil fuel infrastructure, is a clear environmental justice issue in addition to directly impacting future climate change that is currently harming communities. It directly vents extreme air particulate and noxious pollution directly into the lungs of mainly communities of color and working-class communities, and it's an unacceptable risk and health hazard for our city's children and families. Zenith transports dangerous tar sands and Bakken crude oil, some of the dirtiest, most volatile, and energy-intensive fossil fuels on the planet. Its extraction causes destruction of indigenous communities and carbon-sequestering boreau forests in Canada. While the city has prioritized constructing earthquake-ready bridges and buildings, it ignores that Zenith is on a liquefaction zone. In the event of an earthquake, we would see nightmarish explosions, fires, and spills that could permanently damage infrastructure and ecosystems throughout the whole Portland area and beyond. And of course, these are primarily communities of color. Columbia River Keeper also found that Zenith has discharged pollutants that violate federal water runoff laws in more than 90 runoff events just between last April and last January. And as if these weren't enough, Zenith's operations directly oppose Portland's Climate Emergency Declaration and its agreement to ban the toxic substance MDI in 2019. And Zenith's new construction transports more oil since 2019 violates the city's ban on new fossil fuel infrastructure, it's permitless, and it flouts the National Clean Air Water Act. This, unlike some of the tough climate decisions coming our way, which again, don't envy you for, is not a hard decision. This can be an easy win for the city, though it will, of course, require bravery in making the right choice. I urge the city council and the BDS to make the right choice, the one that chooses people and communities over the lazy status quo, the one that chooses health and progress over unlawful and unsafe business practices. For every Black and Brown family who could be killed by an explosion, for every kid in a low-income household suffering respiratory issues, for every ecosystem we love and rely on in the Pacific Northwest, for every scared young person who is counting on her city to walk the walk, please do the right thing and stop Zenith. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie. And that completes Communications. Have any items been pulled off of the consent agenda?
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Hardesty, you wanted to go first. I know.
Commissioner Rubio.
Yeah. Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to, um, I don't want to speak to the topic that was on Communications today, but I want to compliment the work that was put into telling the story that was told this morning in Communications. Clearly, this is a very emotional issue for people when we talk about Zenith and what's to come. But I just want to say, I love it when people practice in advance. They're all within 10 seconds of the allotted time, and they have a very specific ask for us as the elected leadership in this city. And I just wanted to say how refreshing it is to know that people have taken the time to be prepared to create a story that they wanted to make sure that we heard today. And I want you to know, job well done. We did hear your story. And Zenith will be coming up on our agenda later this month. But that's all I wanted to say. I wanted to compliment the work that went into what was an excellent presentation by all the speakers on Communication this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rubio.
Thanks. I want to thank everybody that was testifying for all your comments. They were incredibly clear and good, and your concerns about the climate and the community risks of fossil fuels operating here in Portland. I want you to know, we absolutely do you, and I share those concerns. I'm deeply committed, and I know our council is helping Portland transition to a cleaner energy future. The Bureau of Planning Sustainability, one of the bureaus I'm in charge of, has a key role in that transition and is doing a lot of work on this right now, using both planning and sustainability approaches. And I'm also really encouraged that in this situation, the city has used all of the tools available to help facilitate that transition. So by putting conditions on the land use compatibility statement for Zenith, we're making it very clear that we are no longer going to allow the expansion of fossil fuels in Portland, but we are committed to a renewable energy transition for Portland. And this is a pivotal moment and message to the industry. So I just want to thank you for your advocacy and for all your hard work on these important issues and for raising your concerns with us. And if you have any questions or concerns, our office is happy to connect you with BPS so that you can understand fully the work that they're doing.
Commissioner Rubio, thank you. Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Hardesty, for that sentiment about the textbook testimony you received. And I agree. And thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for setting some context. For those viewing, we do handoffs. So this came from BPS, and now it's in BDS, and I am the commissioner in charge of BDS, and I want to thank you all for your comments and concerns. They were, again, well put. And this will be back to the council. I want to just give you some context from what BDS received and how this is going. The Bureau of Development Services is using the tools available under the city code to help Zenith complete significant safety upgrades to their facility. This project does not expand capacity of existing storage tanks. Last year, Zenith submitted an application for infrastructure to support renewable fuels. In response, the Bureau of Development Services issued a land use compatibility statement. The statement requires Zenith Energy to use the new infrastructure exclusively for renewable fuels and non-fuel products. Zenith Energy is prohibited from using the new infrastructure for fossil fuels. These commitments support the city's dedication to a clean energy future. This work enhances the city's commitment to its climate action plan and promoting the use of renewable and alternative fuels. We look forward to hearing more comments, and thank you for your engagement.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. It just came to my attention that former U.S. Representative Elizabeth First died. And I would like to ask us to suspend the rules and provide a moment of silence in honor of the incredible leadership she has given to the state of Oregon.
Without objection.
Thank you, Mayor and colleagues.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. Commissioner Ryan, did that complete your comment?
It did, but I just want to thank Commissioner Hardesty for that moment. There's been so much going on, and a really important person to the fabric of our state passed on. And I'll just quickly say, I shared a hallway with her at Portland State University, and she was the most genuine, authentic, passionate person. And her, she educated me a lot about tribal governments. And it was just a real blessing, and I speak for anyone that met her, to come across her path. You would never know that she was, just three months ago, was in Washington, D.C., being a Congresswoman. Anyway, thank you so much, Commissioner Hardesty, for that moment to take a breath and honor a real champion. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. I'd like to make a comment about Elizabeth First as well. But first, I know we still have our Zenith folks hanging, and I wanted to just state clearly and unequivocally my interest in this issue and my commitment to limiting oil train traffic through not only the city of Portland, but the Columbia River Gorge and other scenic areas has not wavered at all. And I still remain fully committed, even though I have reassigned both of the bureaus that I oversaw that had direct nexus with this issue. I will still be there as a strong ally, working alongside of you. I agree completely with those who say we should not have volatile oil trains coming through our community. And, you know, we not only had the Mosher example in the Columbia River Gorge, but we had a close call on Hayden Island when a train hit an overpass. That turned out to be not a significant issue, but it could have been a very significant issue, and we've certainly seen this in other parts, not only of the country and our state, but the world as well. And it is particularly galling to me that the city of Portland is being set up as a crude oil export colony for Canada. That should be unacceptable to any of us. So that's my thinking on that subject. I appreciate the testimony. I appreciate people coming forward. With regard to Elizabeth First, I want to just add to what Commissioners Hardesty and Ryan said. I don't want to forget she had a great sense of humor. At times like this, you know, she was a great leader, a distinguished leader, had so many accomplishments to her name. But the humor is what I'm going to remember. Just the personality, the drive, the determination, but matched, matched with a keen sense of humor. And I really liked that about her. It's the part that really resonated the most with me. So thank you, colleagues, for taking that moment to remember. Commissioner Ryan, you have your hand up.
Mayor, I want to add one more thing, if I may. And I was trying to be very judicious with my time, so I didn't talk about my personal relationship with Representative Elizabeth First. But I remember my very first legislative session, I was assigned to the Water Policy Committee. What I knew about water policy was you turn a faucet on, and if water came out, that was good water policy. Elizabeth First became my personal mentor around water policy because of both her life experience in South Africa as well as her experience working with tribal communities throughout Oregon. She was the one that first introduced me to tribal sovereignty and why it was important for us to be respectful of tribal nations. I learned so much about being a stateswoman from Elizabeth First, and I'm going to always remember her as with that big smile and the big laugh and always trying to feed me. And so, again, thank you all for giving us the opportunity to just acknowledge an incredible human being who just happened to also be an incredible public servant.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next up, the consent agenda. Have any items been pulled from the consent agenda?
We've had no request to pull items.
Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
I think consent agenda is adopted. First time certain item 257.
Appoint Jessica Lagunas to the Open Signal Board for term to expire June 30, 2023.
Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you may know, Open Signal has made it possible for us to broadcast city council meetings and budget forums. In other words, they're a pretty huge part of how we've made it through this pandemic. And they've quickly recalibrated and scaled up their work to ensure they provide Portlanders a means for safe civic engagement and transparency. And we're very appreciative of their work. And so it's my pleasure to introduce our appointment, Jessica Lagunas, to the Open Signal Board of Directors. I've had the opportunity to work with Jessica in various capacities for many years, and I'm thrilled that she is willing to serve our community in this way. Jessica is no stranger to the visual, performing, and media arts community. She currently runs Studio Latino Arts and Culture Program at Latino Network, a Latinx community-based organization where she works with schools and youth programs aimed at building positive cultural identity development through arts. And in addition to this work, for the past 10 years, Jessica has coordinated IDEL-PDX Inter Cambio de Artistas Latinos, a Pacific Northwest Latino artist exchange that brings together Pacific Northwest artists to collaborate, support community, and showcase cultural creativity of Northwest Latinx artists. It was in this work that she also had the opportunity to work with media arts and recognizes the opportunity and power of amplifying community voices and creativity. I've been very impressed with Jessica's commitment to lifting up the voices of BIPOC artists in all forms of expression. And we are all thrilled to have her represent Portlanders in the important work of Open Signal. So I'll now turn it over to Jessica to say a few words.
Thank you. Well, my name is Jessica Lagunas, and I was born in Mexico, and I have the honor to live in the occupied land of Clacamas for the last 16 years. As Commissioner Rubio said, I got involved in the arts and culture as an art producer in 2010. And since then, I have held an important creative role as directing the Latino Art Collective, IDEL-PDX. This volunteer run collective brings the Latino artists together to learn skills and tools to grow as professional artists. I have immersed myself 100% towards lifting the voices and cultural narratives to feel well represented and culturally and creatively understood. Besides all the roles that Commissioner Rubio mentioned as my arts and culture coordinator at Latino Network, I have voluntarily served on the Oregon's Art Commission, the Portland Regional Arts and Culture Council. And since 2019, I am part of the Advisory Committee of the Portland Five Center for the Arts. It would be a privilege for me to serve at Open Signal Board and offer my experience to the organization. My wish is to continue to support artists to community and the youth as they amplify their creativity using digital technology and filmmaking arts. Thank you, Commissioner Rubio, and all who bring me here today to continue serving.
Thank you, Jessica. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Jessica, thank you so much for your willingness to serve. We're very, very pleased to have some of you of your caliber willing to step forward, serve the community. Thank you for that. Colleagues, if there's no further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we accept the nomination as presented by Commissioner Rubio.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rubio, seconds. Kealan, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for recruiting and bringing someone on that's so capable and ready to serve. So thank you, Jessica, for your interest and your willingness to serve on the Open Signal Commission. I was really taken with your experience, your lived experience, both in the studios and in the boardrooms. So that's, you cover a lot of ground. We're really grateful to have you serving our city. I vote aye.
Hardesty.
I also want to thank you, Commissioner Rubio and Jessica, for your willingness to give your talent freely to the city of Portland. I have a love affair with Open Signal. I served on their board. I was the president. I'm a huge, huge, huge fan of community media and the opportunity that Open Signal provides for so many of our community members. And Jessica, your talent is just phenomenal, and you are going to be a perfect fit with this community board to make sure that we are elevating voices in our community who don't have access to traditional outlets for their voice. So I wholeheartedly vote aye.
Maps.
Like my colleagues, I want to thank Jessica for her willingness to serve our community. I vote aye.
Rubio.
Again, just want to say thank you so much, Jessica, for your willingness to serve. And I'm very excited to see your work moving forward. Congratulations, and I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Happy to support. I vote aye. The report is approved. The appointment is approved. Thank you so much. And again, Jessica, congratulations and thank you for your service. We appreciate it. Next item, 258.
Appoint Vincent Wale Brown and reappoint Richard Roche to the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission.
Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you. The Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission develops cable communication systems in Multloma County, as well as the cities of Portland, Fairview, Gresham, Troutdale, and Wood Village. The commission is currently leading the Comcast Cable Negotiations, which provides about $7 million annually to our general fund. The MHCRC also administers and distributes about $800,000 in community grants on behalf of Portland and other member jurisdictions. I'm now pleased to introduce two nominees to serve on the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission, Wally Brown and Rich Roach, who has already served on the commission for a year. Wally has worked at several different infrastructure-related regional and local agencies around Portland, including TriMet, Metro, BES, BPS, and the Hillsborough Water Department. These experiences have led him to develop a unique and comprehensive understanding of our region's infrastructure, and he has grown to appreciate how intersectional and interrelated infrastructure projects are, as well as the importance of their good stewardship and maintenance. In his application, he wrote that if elected to serve, I aspire to center the focus of the group toward equity, inclusion, sustainability, and systems level thinking. We are thrilled Wally will bring his expertise and love of systems to work on the commission. And Rich, Rich is a retiree with 40 years' experience working in the telecommunications industry with Pac Bell and AT&amp;T. He has extensive knowledge and experience that he brings to the work of the Cable Commission. He's done it all, from climbing telephone poles, fixing customer issues, working with nonprofits, managing budgets, and working on everything from local programming capabilities and local governments to community coordination and statewide franchise obligations. Rich has a bag of tools and skills that we are so fortunate to have here in Portland. Rich has also served on the Boards of Board of Directors for Self-Enhancement, Inc. and Work Systems. So he brings a valuable community-based perspective to the commission, and we are grateful he is willing to continue to serve our community. So now I'm pleased to invite Wally and Rich to say a few words.
I can go ahead. Hello, everyone. I'm going to put my timer on so I can stay under time. Okay. Hello and good morning, everyone. My name is Wally Brown. So first, I'd like to say thank you, Council and City of Portland, for having me. Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for this appointment. And thank you to the Office of Community Technology for supporting my onboarding. Yes, I look forward to serving the Mount Hood region and representing Portland on the MHCRC. And my position is kind of unique, and I also serve as a liaison to Open Signal, so I'm very excited about that. Yeah, I'm committed to serving in a manner that's equitable, just, collaborative, and responsible. Yes, and responsible across many ways. And then to kind of catch up on this role, I've been reading annual reports, bylaws, intergovernmental agreements, and will continue learning more to serve effectively. So just so you all know, and the city of Portland can know, a brief overview of my background and what'll be the positionality that I'll be bringing to this position. Graduated with a master's from PSU. I had public infrastructure from the Director of Public Works down in Salem. Studied in Quebec, Canada, and South Korea, and their infrastructure just works differently, all right? And continuing a master's in public health at OHSU. I kind of detailed work history. I forgot TriMet, but I put it in there. So I was at BPS, I was at Metro, BES, Portland Housing Bureau, TriMet, Hillsborough Water. And then I used to be a financial analyst with my mom. So a lot of audits, planning, and infrastructure. I was a, yes, and I've been an amateur photographer and videographer, and I do web design. So I have a very soft spot for what Open Signal does. Yes, and I'm often the resident techie wherever I go. And with a few nonprofits that I've been working with and working for to help breed off, that's Urban Green Spaces, Willamette Partnership, Unite Oregon, EPAP, Mapping Action Collective in Alberta Main Streets. And so I'm going to be connected to community and connected to technology. And the lens for my service will be equity, fiscal responsibility, collaboration, transparency, and due diligence. So with all of that, thank you all so much, and happy Wednesday.
Thank you, Wally. Rich.
Good morning. Thank you for consideration of my reappointment, and thank you for your comments, Commissioner Rubio. You covered most of the stuff that I was going to say, so thank you very much for that. But the commission reappointment allows me the opportunity to continue my work to create positive change in our community. It's been, I've really enjoyed being on the commission because there's good things going on. My belief, while there's two different areas that excite me the most about being on the commission, is to work to evolve cable technologies for the 21st century and beyond. I don't view cable as a mature service product with support and direction. I believe that cable technologies can evolve and be a key technology in closing the digital divide in underserved communities. Additionally, the other area is to drive community technology grants towards opportunities that highlight and focus on the needs of the underserved communities. Grants need to creatively address closing the digital divide and be awarded to organizations that can provide sustained and ongoing change to our communities. I look forward to working with the commission if reappointed, and thank you very much for this opportunity. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Wally and Rich. So, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Very good, colleagues. If there's no further questions or discussions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we accept the report as presented.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Maps. Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you again, Commissioner Rubio, for bringing these appointments to the dais. Welcome, Wally Brown. That was really, I could have listened to you talk for much longer. I don't say that often. I really was impressed with, you used the word "system level thinking", and people are starting to say that a lot now, but I believed you. And it's because of all the different places that your life experience has taken you. And I, and Go Vikes, it's great that you have a master's degree from Portland State, but I just hope that you keep leaning into that. System change work is fun and exciting to talk about, but man, when you're trying to implement it, there's a lot of headwinds because it's change. So anyway, I'm rooting for you, and I'm really glad that you're including the city of Portland in your service. I'm really happy that you're joining this commission. And thank you, Richard, for signing up for more time. Your experience is really needed at the table. I vote aye.
Hardesty.
I want to thank Richard and Wally for their willingness to provide such expertise, experience as volunteers for the Mount Hood Regulatory Commission. And I also want to once again thank Commissioner Rubio. You know, it's amazing. I've been just so impressed with the appointees that Commissioner Rubio has moved forward in her short time as my colleague on the council. And what I love about the appointments that are traditional, and traditional as for three months, right? With Commissioner Rubio is all of the appointments are individuals who are grounded in community. And they may be grounded in different ways, but they are deeply connected, they are deeply grounded, and they're deeply committed to people who have not had a voice in our government and in our governance. And so I am grateful that you are both willing to serve, and Richard, that you're willing to continue to serve. Commissioner Rubio, a job well done. I vote aye.
Maps.
Like my colleagues, I'd like to thank Wally and Richard for their public service. I vote aye.
Rubio.
Again, I want to thank Wally and Rich for their willingness to serve and really excited for the energy and the expertise they're going to bring in this next set of years. And look forward to continuing to work with them. Both. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Well, this is exciting to see the caliber of all the appointments we've made today. And Wally and Rich, you're fitting right in with the theme of the day, which is exceptional people serving our community. Commissioner Rubio, thanks to you and your team for bringing forward such qualified candidates or rebringing forward and keeping interested previously very qualified candidates. This is great, and I appreciate both of your interest in stepping forward and serving the community on an ongoing basis. This is a very important commission. It can get wonky at times, as you well know. But the work that you do better informs the work that we have to do, and it definitely serves the community in a positive way. So thank you. And again, Commissioner Rubio, thank you for two excellent appointments. I vote aye. The reports adopted and the appointments approved. Thank you. Next up, we are to the regular agenda. Item 262, please.
Accept bid of James W. Fowler Co. for the Carolina Trunk WZ-02 Rehabilitation Project for $1,563,000.
Colleagues, this is a procurement report for a Bureau of Environmental Services project that will rehabilitate or replace deteriorated pipes throughout the city sewer system. Chief Procurement Officer Kathleen Brenness Marua is here to present this report, and we're also going to hear from BES project staff. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, I am Kathleen Brenness Marua, Chief Procurement Officer. With me are Joe DeVorak, Engineering Manager, and Yuang Zhong, Project Manager with the Bureau of Environmental Services. We are here to recommend authorization to enter into a contract with James W. Fowler Company for the Carolina Trunk Rehabilitation Project. Joe and Yuang have a brief presentation about the project, and I will let them present that now, and then I'll follow with a summary of the procurement process. Joe?
Great, Kathleen. For the record, Joe DeVorak with Bureau of Environmental Services. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. We were here in December to seek authorization to solicit bids for this project. Young Zhang, our project manager, gave a presentation, so he'll do that again really quickly, just to orient you to the project. And then I'm available for questions as well. Young?
Thank you, Joe, and good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Yang Zhang, the project manager with the Bureau of Environmental Service for this project. So I'm going to share my screen for the presentation. So please let me know whether you can see my screen now.
Yeah, we can see it.
Thank you, Mayor. So last year, we presented this project to city council for requesting the authorization of competitive bids. So this year, the project was overtaxed and bid. So today, I'm here to present this project, and I think that'll be helpful to understand the special condition of this project. So here is a brief overview of the project. So Carolina Trunk Project is one of the large trunk projects in the BES Large-Scale Fuel Rehab Program. So this project is to repair the deteriorated steel trunk at Southwest Portland. So the project site is located on Southwest McKendon, as shown on the map, so which is the old, our right away. So the scope of the project include rehabilitation of 760 So the scope of the project include rehabilitation of 760 feet, 51 inch sewer trunk and 310 feet of 20 inch ferromans. So all those pipes are over 100 years old. So construction methods to be used in the project includes spiral wall lining for large sewer trunk and could in place pipe lining called a CAPP for ferromans. So as we know, CAPP is a common rehab method that has been used in many city sewer projects. Compared to the CAPP, the spiral wall lining is a new technology. And the majority of work in this project will use spiral wall lining. So I give more details next page about this technology. So spiral wall lining is an innovative trenchless technology and it is typically used for large trunk rehabilitation. This project is the first project in the city and also in the Northwest Coast to use this technology. And so this project is a pilot project. So on the right side of this page, the photos show the spiral wall lining profile and the warning machine that'll be inside of the pipeline. So during installation, the landing profile is put into the pipe through existing manhole and the warning machine travels inside of the pipe to interlock the landing profile and form the lander against the wall of the host pipe. Compared to other technologies, the spiral wall lining has two major benefits. So lander can be installed with low flow and also it can stop and restart at any time if being interrupted. Additionally, this technology is considered to provide seismic resiliency. So this is critical for the city to provide reliable sewer service for the future. So due to the above benefits, so this technology is considered as an effective solution for the trunk rehab and is a candidate for inclusion in the city's sewer repair toolbox for the future projects. In order to qualify for the spiral wall line installation, so the installer must be trained and licensed by the landing manufacturer. So as we know, this is new technology. So currently, the number of the contracts who are qualified for spiral wall lining are limited in the Northwest Coast. Because this project is the first time for the city to use spiral wall lining. So BS team realized that the local contracted community may not have enough experience and knowledge about this technology. So last year in November, and the BS team attended NUKA meeting. So NUKA is the Northwest Utility Contracts Association. So we attended their meeting, we presented the project and introduced technology. And our purpose is to draw more, draw more interests from the contractors to encourage competitive bids and also to give contractors more time learning this technology and get the trend and lessons from the manufacturer. So the project was overtaxed in February 2021 this year and the bid open was in March 2021. Engineers' cost estimates at the final stage is about 1.6, 1.462 million. And received bid is 1.563 million, so which is considered within a reasonable range. So if the bid would be approved to accept, it is anticipated project construction will start in June 2021. So that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Young. I'll go ahead and summarize the procurement process. So on December 9th of 2020, council approved ordinance number 190224 for procurement services to solicit the project. And as Young has stated, the engineer's estimate was 1.462 million and the confidence level was high at that time. Procurement Services issued an invitation to bid on February 15th and bids were open on March 9th. And we received one bid. The bid from James W. Fowler Company was deemed responsive in the amount of 1,563,000, which is approximately 7% over the engineer's estimate, but has been determined to be reasonable by BES engineering staff. The city's aspirational 20% subcontractor and supplier utilization goal applied. Fowler has committed to subcontract 8.51% to firms certified by the state's Certification Office for Business Inclusion and Diversity, as identified in the report before you. They're self-performing 88.3% of the work and subcontracting an additional 3% to non-certified firms. We feel that James Fowler was limited in being able to do more in achieving the aspirational goal, given the specialized technology that is being used, that requires special licensing. And additionally, there was limited subcontracting opportunities within the scope of this project for certified firms. James W. Fowler Company is in full compliance with all of the city's contracting requirements. And I here recommend that council accept this report and authorize execution of the contract. I'm happy to answer any questions about the procurement process. Joe and Young are here to answer questions about the project itself and the scope. And we also have John Fowler with James W. Fowler Company to address any questions about their good faith efforts.
Very good colleagues. Any questions? Commissioner Hurst?
Thank you for that presentation and for this information. Now, I was told this contract was an opportunity for us to identify minority owned firms that would be able to learn this new technology. As I reviewed what's been presented to council, I don't see any pathway towards having anything different than a very low 8% utilization rate at the end of this program. Am I missing something?
Jen, do you have anything to add about outreach to certified firms?
Or strategy or plan? Is there a plan to ensure that at the end of this process, this contract, that there are minority firms that now have the expertise necessary for this new technology?
Commissioner Hardisty, Joe Dvorak, again, I think the construction industry is pretty conservative by nature. I think this is, is a pilot project, so we hope to learn a lot. And I think as we gain more experience with this technology, certainly right out of the gate, I think more contractors will feel comfortable bidding. I think more training and outreach is one strategy that we'll have to employ. And I think it'll be easier to train and do outreach when you say, when you can say this project has been done successfully and give people the confidence that if they attempt to bid on it, their, the risk maybe will be lower because there's experience with it.
So the, so the answer to my question is actually no. We don't anticipate at the end of this project to have any more than $48,000 going to a person of color owned firm.
At the end of this project, I don't believe so, no.
I, I had a different understanding of why we took this approach, why we chose this firm. And so I, I just have to say I'm kind of disappointed in what I'm hearing today. Maybe the owner of the Fowler Company has some information that would make me feel more comfortable about why I should support this contract. Because at the moment, I'm just not feeling it.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm John Fowler and I do have a little bit more information that I could provide if you're asking me to speak up, yes. If I could, just a quick statement, I wanted to say good morning to the mayor and the council. Fowler is a company that has been in business for 50 years. We've been in Portland for 30 years. I recently found that my grandfather lived on Mississippi and attended Franklin High. So that was kind of interesting news. We have an exceptional history with working with the city and embracing their local MDSB construction community goals and have received multiple accolades for our work in concert with those goals and the council's goals. The city is, has been working on this pilot project, project for quite some time. And Fowler has worked for more than a year with the inventor of this technology to try to make it something that could be used in the city of Portland. We coordinated with people from Japan, Australia and multiple locations within the United States. As always is the case, we perform a pretty exhaustive review and good faith efforts and outreach, including myself calling people that I knew within the community to try to maximize our participation. We understand that it's low. We have a rich history of, of improving on those goals as time progresses. And we are committed to continuing our efforts to improve the goals. We don't give up easily.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. I appreciate your, your comments. You've been doing business with the city for 30 years, you said. And so it is fascinating to me that with a 30-year history of doing contracts with the city that you have not been able to build a deeper bench, folks that you could subcontract with. And I, and I think the accolades that have been given in the past have been primarily unearned. Because when we glob everything together, we don't see the disparate treatment and outcomes of who benefits and who doesn't from city contracts. So I look forward to a day where we are actually real about making sure that we are achieving the goals that we have set as a city and as individual contractors. So I thank you, Mr. Fowler, for your testimony and I am done.
May, thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. Commissioner Maps?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to jump in here. One of the things I want to share is a BES perspective. For this, for us, this is a pilot project exploring some new and exciting technology. If this project turns out well, one of our bureau-wide goals is to work with the community to develop the skills, to develop and transfer the skills that are required for this kind of work to minority contractors. Therefore, as we move forward, which with what I hope will be the future of this kind of project, we will have a bench and base minority contractors and women-owned firms who are in a position to competitively bid for this project. So I hope that this is, this pilot project not only introduces new technology to our community that is cheaper and more effective. I also hope that we can use this as a first step towards developing, developing a skill base out there that will allow, allow minority contractors to actually participate and get some of these contracts moving forward.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, Commissioner Hardisty.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Commissioner Maps. Again, I was under the impression that we would be able to see that from the very beginning in this contract. You know, so what, I don't have 10 years to wait to see results of people of color having access to these contracts, right? It would have been helpful if procurement had actually made it as part of the procurement process. What are you going to do now with this first test to make sure that you are engaging contractors of color and women-owned firms, right? I am disappointed that we continue to have aspirations that we don't actually put measurements in the contracts for us to achieve. So I am a bit frustrated this morning because I was led to believe that this contract would be a path towards making that happen. And clearly, it's not the case.
Very good. Any further comments or questions? This is a report. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the report.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Ryan, seconds. Please call the roll.
Ryan?
Aye.
Hardisty.
We don't have a decade to ensure that minority contractors have opportunities with the city of Portland. We don't have a decade to wait to find out if our partners that we've worked with 30-plus years have the ability to engage contractors led by minority owned firms and women-owned firms. I am really disappointed that this is presented to us today as an opportunity. I don't see it as an opportunity for us to be building for the future. If the contract doesn't include it, guess what? It is not building towards the future. I am, I'm going to, I'm a no vote. I cannot support this as has been presented to us today. And I continue to be really disappointed at our aspirations not even being closely met. I vote no.
Maps?
I appreciate Commissioner Hardisty's perspective here, although I disagree. I'm excited about this new technology. I believe it represents the future of infrastructure here in Portland. One of our goals with this pilot project is number one, to see if it will work in Portland. And if it does work in Portland, one of my commitments as the commissioner in charge of BES is to work with the minority contracting community to help them learn these new skills so that they can bid competitively on this, on projects like this, which I hope will be what the future of infrastructure looks like here in Portland. At least that's my goal as the commissioner in charge of BES. For these reasons, I vote aye.
Rubio?
Thank you, Commissioner Maps and staff for bringing this item forward. I'm really eager to see the impact of this new technology for the city. And I have to say that I too, like my colleague, am very concerned about the lack of contractor diversity in this case. And I'm very eager to see how this project, this pilot project develops. I'll support this pilot, but I also want to echo the urgency of addressing these things. We keep talking about it. And I am also very eager to work with my colleagues and the bureaus to ensure that we walk our talk more in creating these opportunities. And our work is definitely cut out for us here at the city. We need, we need to really focus on this and, and build strategies for getting this done. And we also have some work and advocacy to do at the state level as well. So I look forward to that work. It will be hard, but it, we need to do it because we have urgency around it. So I vote aye.
Wheeler?
This was a great discussion. I appreciate it. And Commissioner Hardisty, I, I hear your sentiment and I respect what you're saying. We're not going to know on this project until we do it, but I want to put some strings on it as well. I, I would like regular updates on the status of this project. I'd like to know whether it's working or whether it's not working. Let's use this, you know, I, I will support this. I will do this as an act of faith, both in the bureau and in Fowler Construction Company, plus I, I, you know, am inclined to to support the position of the commissioner in charge. But then if this is going to be a learning experience, let's make sure we learn from it. So Commissioner Maps, can we just get a commitment from you that you will keep us posted and updated on this? And if it works, great. Let's make sure we're learning from it and that we're institutionalizing that learning. If it doesn't work, let's just be honest and transparent about it. Say it didn't work so that we understand where, where the chips fell on this one. Because I, I'd certainly like to see how it turns out. With that, I will support it. The report is accepted. The project is approved. Thank you. Next, I am also on the regular agenda. 263, please.
Accept proposal of Raymore Construction LLC for the Outer Division Multimodal Safety Project for $7,530,290.
Colleagues, this is a procurement report for a Portland Bureau of Transportation project that will construct safety improvements on Southeast Division Street between Southeast 80th and Southeast 174th Avenue. The crowd cheers. Chief Procurement Officer Kathleen Brenness Marua is here to present this report as well. Welcome back.
Thank you. Again, for the record, I'm Kathleen Brenness Marua, Chief Procurement Officer. With me is Liz Tilston, the Capital Project Manager with the Bureau of Transportation. And we are here to recommend authorization to enter into a contract with Raymore Construction LLC for the Outer Division Multimodal Safety Project. Council approved an exemption from the low bid procurement method on July 8, 2020, authorizing procurement services to conduct a request for proposal solicitation process to award a contract. Authorizing Procurement Services to conduct a request for proposal solicitation process to award a contract. The overall budget for the project was estimated at that time at eleven point three million. Procurement Services issued a request for proposals on January sixth. And on February eighteenth, we received five responsive proposals. The proposals were evaluated by a seven member evaluation committee that consisted of representatives. From the Bureau of Transportation as well as two community members from the Minority Evaluator Program. Raymore Construction's proposal received the highest scores. And Transportation accepts the Evaluation Committee's recommendation. To award the contract to Raymore in the amount of seven million five hundred and thirty thousand. The city's aspirational twenty percent subcontractor supplier utilization goal applied. Raymore Construction has committed to subcontract twenty nine point six three percent. To contractors certified by the state's certification office for business inclusion and diversity. As identified in the report before you. Additionally, Raymore Construction is a certified disadvantaged and minority business enterprise. And they are self performing the remaining seventy percent of the work. Thus, a hundred percent of the project will be delivered. By certified contractors. Raymore Construction is in full compliance with all city contracting requirements. And I recommend you authorize this contract. I'm happy to answer questions about the procurement process and Liz is here to talk about the scope of the project.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, Commissioner Hardesty.
Uh, thank you. And thank you for presenting this. I I just want to point out just the stark difference between our last conversation. And where we're starting this conversation right now. And I and I want to point it out not to be disrespectful of anyone else, but I want to point it out because. You know, aspiration does not get anybody fit. And we, as we, as I found out recently, the city of Portland has fourteen programs. That are supposed to benefit minority and women owned firms. And in fact, the audits continue to tell us that white men and white women continue to be the primary beneficiary of those programs. Every time Mr. Morland comes to City Council, I am giddy. Because I know if he's sitting in front of us, there is going to be a project. That is going to bust the aspirations just through the roof. And he's going to tell us exactly how and why. And it's because actually over his time doing construction, he has built relationships. With other minority and women owned firms. If we at the city continue to contract with people for thirty plus years. And they have not taken the time to build relationships. How are they ever going to achieve our aspirations? I just wanted to take a moment and 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 let my colleagues see that with intention. This could happen every single time. But it only happens if somebody's committed to what the outcome is. And so I, that's all I wanted to say. I I I feel like I'm preaching today, but I. It was such a perfect back to back conversation. And such a stark difference between what happens when you're intentional about it. And what happens when you just aspire to it. Thank you. And not any disrespect, I'm pretty sure that the. The other proposal, people want to do good work. But again, at the beginning, when your aspiration has been busted through the roof. That gives me much more confidence that at the end, we're going to have more opportunities for more. Women owned and minority owned firms.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Maps.
I don't want to get distracted too much on this. I know we have people waiting to present. And I appreciate Commissioner Hardesty's contrast. One of the other contrasts here is with the project that we just looked at. We're looking at a brand new technology that's never used. It has never been used in Oregon before. One of the goals with that project is number one to see if that technology works in Oregon. And number two, if it does work in Oregon, I can tell you as the commissioner in charge of B E S, we are deeply committed to taking the skills that are needed to do that kind of work. And spreading it out to the minority contracting community. On the other hand, I think this, the technology that we're going to hear about in this next project, which I support. Is relying on a much more well established set of tools and a set of skills. That's it.
And I I'd just like to jump in and say, I I know that this isn't exactly the highest rated show on television. But this is a really good discussion we're having today. And I I just want to appreciate you, my colleagues, that were having it. This, this is pretty awesome. Thanks. Is there more to the presentation?
We're done with the presentation.
You're done with the presentation. We took it over, but it but it was good. You have to admit it's been a great conversation today. And I'm appreciative for it. Let's see, this is.
I see that Mr. Morland from. Is here, the the potential contractor from Raymore Construction. Just wanted to see if he wanted to add a few words.
Absolutely, Mr. Raymore. Did you want to jump in?
I mean, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. Commissioner Hardesty actually said everything that, you know, that I would have said is that. This has been, we've been contracted for a long time and it's taken, you know, twenty years to build relationships and to grow and mentor. Minority contractors to get to the point where we can do real, real work, right? I want you to point you to the Division Transit Project where eighty six percent is a seventy million dollar project. Where eighty six percent of that work is scheduled to be performed by minorities. So. We are having intentional and we are, you know, doing this. And so I just want to encourage you to continue to utilize alternative procurement methodologies. And continue to support what, you know, what we're doing to bring inclusion and to kind to restore some of the justice for marginalized communities. So that's all I had to say. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it. So colleagues, this is also a report and I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the report as presented.
Okay.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hardesty, a second from Commissioner Ryan. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Ryan.
Yes, a great report. I'm enthusiastic. Yes. And thank you for being here, Jeff Morland. It's good to see you. Hi.
Hardesty.
Hi.
Maps.
Hi.
Rubio.
I want to thank staff for bringing this forward and excited to see this this project move forward. I vote I.
Wheeler.
Jeff, I I think I described you as Jeff Raymore, which means I've officially just branded. The company's branding is obviously paying off. Well, my apologies. Jeff, thank you for for speaking today. I appreciate it and I'm happy to support this. Looks great. I vote I. And the report is accepted. Next up is another contract. This is a second reading, two, six, four.
Amend contract term with VersaTerm Inc. for application software support and increased compensation in amount not to exceed. Five million nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Colleagues, this is a second reading. We've heard a presentation taken, public testimony. We have further discussion with Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I want to really appreciate. The fact that first you pulled this off of the agenda a couple of weeks ago. Did have an opportunity to talk to Tammy, Mayor from the Portland Police Bureau. And once again, Tammy is always impressive because she only tells you exactly what it is she knows. I, what I'd like to do is propose that we have an amendment to this contract. I would like to propose that this contract be amended so that it is a one year renewable contract. But in order to renew it, we need to come back to the city council. So that is one item. The second item is I want to ensure that the Technology Oversight Committee. Is actually leading our new technology purchase within the Portland Police Bureau. Because you and I know the history of technology purchases without having technical experts. Involve every step of the way. If those two amendments are acceptable, then I would be able to be in favor of this particular. Contract.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. But I have a question. So Commissioner Hardesty, did you just put an amendment on the floor?
I actually just was given a sampling of my amendment. I'm happy to do them one at a time and ask for a second. So the first amendment would be that this contract would be renewed for one year. And for any extensions, it would have to take city council approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Hardesty, did you want to move your second amendment?
And my second one is to require Portland Police Bureau to work with the Technology Oversight Committee. To ensure it effective and efficient purchasing of technology.
Yeah.
Motion for Commissioner Hardesty's second, Hardesty's second amendment is an emotion or a second from Commissioner Ryan. I'd like to hear from staff on both of these amendments.
Tammy, can you unmute?
Tammy, can you, are you able to hear me? I see she's unmuted.
Mayor Wheeler, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, I'm not sure why Tammy can't get on, so I'll I'll try to speak on her behalf a little bit. Ken Lee, I am the Senior Business Operations Manager for the Portland Police Bureau. Basically, on the first amendment, I think, you know, it is possible to do a year to year, obviously. We'll just have to go back to versa term and and some of the terms and conditions may change because we're going from a year to year versus a three year. But that is something we will work with the city attorney's office on. On the second point, I believe it was going requiring the police bureau going through the. Technology Oversight Committee. That is something we can definitely do for sure when we go up for the next RFP.
Great. Commissioner Hardesty, did you raise your hand again?
I did not, Mayor. Sorry.
Oh, okay. Very good. So it it sounds then like we can go ahead and. Make these amendments that if I'm hearing you correctly, will not materially impact our ability to enter into the contract.
Yeah, that is what we'll find out from the city attorney. Well, we'll go back and work with them on it.
Okay, well, if it turns out you can't, then obviously you'll have to come back to us, right?
Yes, we'll do that.
Mayor, I can just say in my conversations with Tammy. It was not the preferable option, but she did feel that it was something that we could certainly do.
All right, well, if if that's, if that's what it takes to get support, that's what it takes to get support. So with that, I'm sorry, Commissioner Maps, you have your hand up as well.
Unfortunately, it sounds like Tammy cannot, her audio is is broken. But if I could ask Commissioner Hardesty to give a quick summary for why this was not the police bureau's preferred. Option.
Well, because, you know, like most of us, right? They prefer to not have to deal with it right away, I think, right? And just, you know, with three years, they would have some wiggle room, I think, right? But again, this contract is so horribly bad, it would not be, in my. Opinion, a good move for us to extend it for three whole years. And I'm hoping that our working with the Technology Oversight Committee. It will actually help the Portland Police Bureau really narrow. And on what they specifically need and what technology would provide the best support for that.
If I can just add one, one clarification. So there are changes with this extension. Is my understanding. Ken, can you confirm that?
I'll probably have to get Tammy back on to talk to that. I'm not aware of the specifics of the extension. Other than we're just extending the current agreement for three years. And if we go to a, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ken, I was also going to add one other thing with the new agreement. Is that we will not be required to pay more when other people drop out. So that is a big change. That will be in the contract moving forward.
Yeah, I will, I will confirm that. That's, I I missed that part. Yes, and it looks like Tammy worked with the the board to. Basically. Kill the I G A, the current I G A, and that we're going to rebuild it up and so that everyone pays their fair share moving forward.
And Mayor, let me just say, I still question why we need a a whole lot of other law enforcement agencies involved in a system. Where what we really need is just to be able to get data when Portland Police Bureau needs it.
Yeah, now you're just triggering me. This contract should never have been entered into. However. There was a valid reason for it. The valid reason was economies of scale. The more organizations that participated. That leveraged quote unquote negotiating strength. That presumably meant that the cost sharing was less per user and less per bureau. But as you are keenly aware, and I am certainly keenly aware, the terms of the contract left. The Portland Police Bureau with all of the downside financial risk and no opt out clause. So let let me just state unequivocally for the umpteenth time for the record, this is a crap-tacular contract. That never should have been signed, but we need a data management system in our police cars. We need it. It's a must have and we have not been able to transfer to the new product as a result of. Other commitments and financial problems we've had over the course of COVID. This gives us a little flexibility as we migrate to a new project. So with with that. Let's go ahead and take a vote on the amendments. Could we call the roll, please, on Amendment One, which would shorten the terms of the contract to one year? Presuming that that can be negotiated. Any further discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Hardesty, for doing the work to get this amendment on the table. I had my hand up. To ask questions, but I was definitely behind you, but loved everything you said. And the word of the day is crap-tacular and.
Hardesty.
I.
Maps.
Hi.
Rubio.
I'm very pleased with the amendments too. I want to say thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. It actually addressed a lot of the questions I had coming in to this agenda item as well. And we still need a data management to be uninterrupted. So I think it finds a path through and gives the bureau. The time it needs to look at other options. I vote I.
Wheeler.
Well, I have to have some linguistic integrity. The term crap-tacular actually is attributed to Matt Greening. So I I want to make sure I give credit where credit is due. I I don't have any problems with this, provided that the bureau doesn't have any problems with it. Or legal doesn't have a problem with it. My suspicion is we will be back next year having a similar discussion, but hopefully not. We'll see. I vote I. The amendment is approved. The second amendment, which would engage the Technology Oversight Committee. Is there any further discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ryan.
I.
Hardesty.
I.
Maps.
Hi.
Rubio.
I.
Wheeler.
Hi. The amendment is approved to the main motion. Actually, stand by. This is a first reading.
No, we had a first reading.
Oh, you're right. Right. Second reading. Call the roll on the main motion as amended.
Ryan.
I.
Hardesty.
I.
Maps.
Hi.
Rubio.
I.
Wheeler.
I have motion passes as amended. The ordinance is adopted, has amended. Next item, two, six, five.
Authorize a sub recipient contract with Resolutions Northwest. For one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the provision of mediation services in support of stabilizing tenants.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you. Colleagues, the Portland Housing Bureau's Rental Services Office provides various services. Designed to protect rental households vulnerable to the negative impacts of displacement or eviction. One of the Rental Service Office's newest services is a landlord tenant mediation pilot program. The ordinance before council today would allow Portland Housing Bureau to contract with Resolutions Northwest. For the provision of free meditation services to landlords and tenants to resolve disputes as part of this new program. With that, I turn this over to Christina Thurks.
Excuse me, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Are they going to be provide meditation or?
Meditation? I'm so sorry. Clearly a poignant slip. So yes, mediation, sorry. That was pretty crap-tacular.
I was like, I was, I want to go.
Yeah, anyway, thanks for the edit. Yeah, anyway, thanks for the edit. With that, I turn this over to Christina Dirks, Rental Policy and Program Coordinator at PHB, and to introduce the Landlord Tenants Mediation Pilot Program. Christina, it's all yours.
Thanks. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. We could all, I think, use some more mediations and meditation services. So hello, I'm Christina Dirks. I am a Rental Housing Policy and Program Coordinator at the Housing Bureau, and I'm here to give you a quick overview of the Landlord Tenant Mediation Pilot Project, and happy to answer any questions you have. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Okay, so just by way of background, the mediation pilot project was a recommendation from the Rental Services Commission back in 2019. The goal of the program is to preserve housing stability for renters and to avoid court filings and the negative ramifications that come with that for both landlords and tenants. This current contract that's before city council is $150,000 in rental station funds for this fiscal year. And then we are also planning in our budget for another $150,000 for next year's contract as well, which will come to you another time. For eligibility for the program, we're going to still flush out the details with the contract provider, but the broad brush overview of the program is that either landlords and tenants can engage in the program. There will be no income restrictions to receive the mediation services themselves, and the program is going to be voluntary. It's not going to be a mandatory diversion program. It's a voluntary program with free mediation services. We do understand that one of the great benefits we think we'll anticipate seeing from this pilot project is that mediation provides the opportunity for the parties to engage in more creative problem-solving, have kind of a deeper dialogue on the disputes that may be between the parties. But we also understand that these conversations are happening with the context of, you know, rights and responsibilities outlined in the law. So we will be providing a general overview and rights and responsibilities to the parties, just to kind of provide a framework for the dialogue that happens in mediation. And we want to make sure that our mediators are equipped with up-to-date referrals, so folks can get connected with services they may need apart from just the mediation. We do plan on setting aside $70,000 of the total $150,000 for financial assistance distributed to eligible tenants that complete a mediation and result in a successful mediated agreement with their housing provider. We intend to set aside those funds for tenants at 60% area median income. And Resolutions Northwest, the contract provider, will be developing an equity tool to determine how to distribute these limited funds, right? Because we know 70,000 isn't probably going to satisfy all the tenants' needs that go through this program. So they will help us in making sure that those funds are going to the most impacted folks in the community. Resolutions Northwest is the provider that we have selected. We went through, as Commissioner Ryan stated, a fairly robust process and engaged community stakeholders to select Resolutions Northwest as a contract provider. They are the largest game in town. They have provided contact resolutions since 1985. They have kind of pioneered locally this equity-informed mediation model, where mediator is using equity framework to offer support to all the parties. They also have mediators of color training programs they're doing, and mediation trailer cohorts, which we are anticipating will be folded into this, this program as well. And they have experience doing this work. They have been providing state-sponsored mediation in the manufactured home context between landlords and tenants, as well as in the foreclosure mediation context. And we are thinking about, you know, this is a pilot project. We want to assess the impact. And so what is it going to look like to have a successful program? And if we want to scale it up, what does that look like? We know that, you know, equity outcomes are incredibly important, and so we want to create intentional outreach strategy to the BIPOC community. We're anticipating that 70 to 150 individuals will come in through the program and receive an intake resulting in 70 to 100 mediations each year. And Resolutions Northwest believe that 70% of those will result in a successful mediation. And we want to see the positive impact of mediation, and part of that is checking in with folks at every step of the process. So when they're engaging with services, when they're going through mediation, and then three months out to see how did mediation affect their housing stability? And so that's all I have for you today, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Colleagues, any questions?
Mayor, I can't get my raised hand button to go up, but I do have a question.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. So I was, I was clear up until the part of the presentation where $50,000 will be set aside to provide grants to people. Could you talk to me about that piece?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So it's $70,000 will be set aside. We, we anticipate that that will hopefully incentivize folks to engage in a program, both landlords and tenants. And we anticipate also that, at least right now, with the eviction moratorium, a lot of the disputes we're going to see are going to be around rent arrears. And so we want to make sure that if folks are able to negotiate a payment plan with the help of a mediator, there's some funds available to allow them to start paying down those rent arrears.
And so that $70,000 is for what?
It's, it's basically financial assistance for parties that have gone through the mediation project and received a mediated settlement agreement that includes some kind of financial payment terms.
And so are we paying the arrears, or are we paying, what do we, who are we paying with that $70,000?
So they will likely be paying the landlord, I would anticipate, but any type of landlord-dispute can go through this mediation project. So it could be, you know, back utilities owed, it could be property damage. Essentially, it would be money that the parties have agreed the tenant owes to the landlord, and we will be using those funds to assist the tenant pay off that balance towards the landlord in order for them to stabilize their housing and hopefully stay in their housing.
So I appreciate having a pilot program to try to test whether or not a theory works. And, and we're talking about 100 or less mediations, right, in this particular project? So I'm, I guess it's not a bad thing to do a pilot to see what works. I guess it raises a lot of concerns for me, because the day that the moratorium is lifted, people will be getting eviction notices all across the city of Portland. And our 100 mediations will be a drop in the bucket as compared to the thousands of people who will be facing court costs. And I'm concerned that as a council, we have not as of yet actually created a fund for legal defense against eviction. And I, it's my hope that we're able to do that through the CARES Act dollars. But I, I just don't want to over-promise a pilot project like this, just knowing the magnitude of the need that's out there and how unrealistic $70,000 is going to be when people haven't paid rent for well over a year. So I appreciate the pilot and I look forward to learning from it, but I also would be really intentional about not over-promising what could be delivered in 100 mediations in that period of time. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Hardisty, and I agree with you, just by way of perspective. This was a proposal that was proposed in 2019. It's been in the Rental Services Office's budget. And so we're getting it off the ground now, but I, I hear you and I agree with you that it is, it's something we want to pilot. We want to see what works, but it's, there's other issues and different program services that should be directed towards the eviction moratorium.
Very good. Colleagues, any further questions at this point? If not, Kealan, do we have any public testimony?
No one signed up for this item, Mayor.
Very good. Please call the roll.
Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Christina. That was a great report, and I really appreciate the focus on outcomes and outputs. The services provided through this program are urgently needed by our renter and landlord community members. Thank you, Resolutions Northwest, for being a partner on this, and Director Callahan and the Portland Housing Bureau staff for your leadership. I vote aye.
Hardisty.
I'm looking forward to seeing what comes out of this pilot and how it may be able to be tweaked to really serve a whole host of community needs that we know are just down the road from us. I vote aye.
Maps.
I want to thank the Housing Bureau and Commissioner Ryan for championing this important pilot project. I think we need work like this, or projects like this now more than ever. I'd love to get a report on how it is playing out. But in the meantime, I will vote aye, and I look forward to learning more, and I wish you all luck.
Rubio.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan and the Housing Bureau for introducing this. The impact of these kinds of evictions and proceedings on low-income folks can sometimes be very devastating, and they push people towards houselessness. I've seen that firsthand in my previous work. So I'll be interested to see the impact of the program, like my colleagues, and if successful, to understand how this approach might work for other things in the future. And I look forward to the reports. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Happy to support. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next up is two six six.
Approve application under the Multiple Unit Limited Tax Exemption Program under the Inclusionary Housing Program for Analog PDX located at 1871 North Flint Avenue.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, excuse me, since February 2017, any building adding 20 or more units is required to contribute to the city's rent-restricted housing inventory through the Inclusionary Housing Program. Developers must choose from several options in order to fulfill inclusionary housing requirements, providing inclusionary housing units in an otherwise market-rate building, sending affordable units to another building, or paying into the Inclusionary Housing Fund. The Multiple Unit Limited Tax Exemption, or multi-program, is one of the financial incentives provided to buildings restricting units rather than paying the fee in lieu. Each multi-application comes before city council for approval, and today we are considering the multi-application for the Analog PDX building. And Matthew Schibold is here to present. Please take it away, Matthew.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan, and Mayor, Members of Council. For the record, Matthew Schibold at the Portland Housing Bureau. So as always, with regard to our policies and programs at the Housing Bureau, we lead with race and racial equity. And to ground the conversation, talking about which communities can afford to live in the city and its neighborhoods in which communities cannot. I know you're familiar with this graphic. Overall, for a program update for quarter two of 2021, we now have a projected minimum of almost 1,200 inclusionary housing units somewhere in the, in the pipeline, either in early assistance, in the permit process, permitted and in construction, or open. And the majority of those units are at 60% of the median income and are studio and one bedrooms. The project, the specific project we're here to talk about today is Analog PDX, and it's set on a backdrop of all of the projects that are in the process or have completed in our, or in construction. So the Analog PDX project is a seven-story residential building. It is using the bedroom reconfiguration option to provide five units of affordable housing at 60% of the median income. The rent is a significant rent discount, given that these are three bedrooms. The neighborhood rent on average for three bedrooms is around $3,800 per month, whereas the rent cap for inclusionary housing is under $1,500 per month. And the property tax exemption, given that this is in the central city, it is eligible for a full property tax exemption on all residential and residential-related square footage of the building is $35,000, roughly $35,000 per IH unit per year. And to date, Analog PDX, the project, has met all city IH requirements. So with that, I'm going to pass it to Director Shannon Callahan to give some key considerations on the project.
Thank you, Matthew, Mayor and Commissioner Shannon Callahan, the Director at the Portland Housing Bureau. I'm joining you today to talk about some key considerations with this project. In particular, this development presents an extreme example of the bedroom reconfiguration option, whereby the three-bedroom units that are being designated as affordable are smaller in square footage than the average one-bedroom and two-bedrooms in the building. Key considerations that we would like to bring to your attention, just overall about this project, is that it does include five units of housing at 60% AMI. All of the option, all of the reconfigured units are three bedrooms. And this does represent a steep discount in rent based on the average three-bedroom for rents in the area. And it obviously has a tax exemption associated with it, which is, as Matt indicated, is about $35,000 based on the value of the units being provided. And this building represents one of seven projects within the current development pipeline that may be subject to some of the older administrative rules and that the Housing Bureau, as you know, has been in the process of changing, and in fact, are planning to enact new and updated rules later this week. I wanted to actually talk to you about how those new rules would apply. Matthew, if you'd go ahead to the next slide for me. So in particular, the new rules that we are in the process of finalizing today, if a building like this were to use a reconfiguration option, we're making some rule changes to frankly, change how the reconfiguration options work. And so we don't see some of these extreme examples that council has been commenting on for the last approximately six months. So to reconfigure to a two- or three-bedroom, the building must have at least a one, at least one two-bedroom market rate unit, so that we can better apply a reasonable equivalency standard. And if the development would like to reconfigure to four bedrooms, it must have a three-bedroom market rate unit. And we're also increasing the reasonable equivalency standard from 90% to 95%. We don't feel that going to 100%, frankly, is reasonable in the way that the developments actually are laid out. But we think 95% provides a stronger, a reasonable equivalency standard. And we're doing an additional safeguard, because some of the ways that the reconfiguration option has worked are things that we frankly did not anticipate when the, when this option was adopted by council in, in late 2016. So we're setting an additional standard to ensure that each reconfigured unit is larger than the average size of the units of lesser bedrooms. Matthew, can we go forward to the next slide, please? So under the new, the new rules, if they were to have applied to analog, and let me be clear, they will not. Analog is a vested project prior to the adoption of the rules. The new safeguards would allow analog to utilize a three-bedroom configuration as it has a two-bedroom market unit. But the minimum size of those three-bedroom units would need to be 1,296 square feet. So I just wanted to express that to you, so you would understand how that looks. I also did want to make sure that council is aware that the developer of this project is on the, is on the call today, and I think would like to give some comments. I did call the developer personally, myself, Paul Delvecchio, and let him know that this particular project, though it met all of the requirements, will certainly have some controversial elements with the small three-bedroom size that I thought he should be aware of, so that he could make sure to be able to talk to council himself. So that actually concludes my part of the presentation. We're happy to take questions and comments, and just wanted you to know that Mr. Delvecchio, I believe, is on the line as well.
Mr. Delvecchio, go ahead. Welcome.
Hi, council members and Mayor Wheeler, thanks for hosting this. Shannon, thank you for the call, and thank you for your presentation. I, I think, you know, I would like to just generally point out that, you know, I understand that I am, I think, you know, I would like to just generally point out that, you know, I understand that the reconfiguration in particular is being reconsidered. And I would like to just add a little context to our company and this building. You know, we were, we're a local company, Portland based, relatively young firm. And we were, I believe, the first and the third early assistance applicants post IH. So while everyone else was pulling up stakes and rushing to complete applications prior to the law taking hold, we were digging in. And, you know, I think everyone expected there to be unintended consequences of a very quickly enacted piece of legislation. I'm not, you know, I, we've all seen this sort of thing happen before. You know, but I don't, I don't want anyone to lose sight of good in search of perfect. You know, there are units out there that were created under the current version of the law. And we produced many of them. We have two buildings that have a very similar format to what you just saw. And they exist today and they're being rented. Our three bedrooms have absorbed well. And our studios have not. I heard from a colleague at Urban Development Partners, a similar platform, that they are having the same experience, that the studios do not offer enough of a discount to market, especially the smaller ones, and there's sort of suboptimal units to be in the, in the affordable housing portfolio. And that that makes sense. What also, you know, one of the versions of this from the developer side is to create, to actually put the studios into circulation because the difference in rent is lower. So it's actually a better economic outcome. The three bedroom circumstance that we're presenting is a less good economic outcome. But we believe it to be more impactful and more in keeping with the spirit of the law and the community objectives. So this was our, our honest and genuine attempt to meet policy goals while also trying to get buildings built, right? We, you know, we're, we're in the middle here between national capital markets and on the ground needs of both, both the market rate and, and governmental and you know, the renter, all the stakeholders. There's, there's many on the development side on the ground. So we're trying to, trying to meet all the objectives and this was the version. This particular building, I believe, as Shannon pointed out, there are some kind of oddities in the square footages. And one I would like to point out is the size of our one bedrooms is very large, eight hundred and ten square feet. And that probably looks bad in the context of a seven hundred and seventy two square foot three bedroom. The, the reason why the one bedrooms are the way they are is due to another esoteric piece of building code, which we don't love but are beholden to, is that in order to put a unit on the ground floor, you have to have one of a few different options. The one that we chose was commercial height ceilings. So this is a one bedroom unit with twenty foot ceilings. The way you make a unit in that space is to make it a loft. It's, it's not a good unit for us. I mean, it's not going to rent for a good number per square foot, which is a metric that developers use. But this is not a retail location either. So I mean, this is an opportunity to revisit retail requirements, but that's not what this conversation is about. So that really doesn't, it's not part of this conversation. That, that's, you know, that's making us do something than holding us accountable for having done it. So, you know, that, and if you exclude that, and then you look at where, where most of the demand for the requirements for inclusionary units came from in this building is from the studios. So eleven of our, or I believe it's eleven of our thirteen, uh, you know, eleven, eleven of our thirteen units or eleven of our fifteen bedrooms were generated from studios. The studios are an average of three hundred and fifty six square feet. Two hundred and twenty percent of that is just a shade over the seven seventy two. So that I believe the proposed requirements in the new version of this, and Shannon can correct me if I'm wrong here, would require that the three bedroom be two hundred and twenty percent of the studio. We're two hundred and seventeen percent of the studio. So, you know, I don't believe we're far off from even the aspirational requirements in this building that is under the old or current requirements. And it's also worth adding that after we went through our entitlement, we're granted design review approval for about a year and a half into our entitlement process at that point. PBOT changed our dedication requirement, which made our studios bigger. So had they not done that, we would have actually been over the two hundred and twenty percent. So it's very complicated. And then just to add one more layer to this, this building is two years in entitlement. One, this building got caught up in the comp plan amendment issue for Central City of last year. So effectively, we put about five hundred grand into this, then the city was unable to hear our design review submission because there was no zoning for the site. Six months later, that was put back in place and we started again. So we managed to keep going through COVID and through that. And as somebody on this call mentioned, you started thinking about this reconfiguration problem six months ago. Six months ago should have been when you were voting on this multi, if not for that issue, which was entirely caused by the city. So, you know, we have endured a lot here and we are doing our best. And I apologize if there are suboptimal outcomes, but it's better than no building and it's better than no inclusionary housing units at all. So we're, we're committed to, to working here. We're committed to doing our best and we're committed to helping create future policy that works for everyone and participate in it.
Thank you, Mr. Delvecchio, for being here today and giving that context. We appreciate it. Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you. I also want to thank Mr. Delvecchio for being here. Mr. Delvecchio, what is the square footage per bedroom in your anticipated three bedroom unit?
I don't have that handy. I believe that Carrie Strickland is on the call and she could possibly answer that. She may have it. She's the principal of Works Progress Architecture or Architect. A bedroom is typically about ninety feet. And I do not believe that our bedrooms are much different in those units, albeit slightly smaller than the rest of the building. Carrie, if you are able to raise your hand.
I can hear you, Carrie.
Okay, great. Yes, that's right. There, the bedrooms in the building average around a hundred square feet. Each, these are really similar to that.
They average a hundred square feet. What I'm trying to get is a real number around, if, if you have a, a studio that's eight hundred square feet, you got a one bedroom that's what, how many square feet is that?
The one bedrooms, as Paul testified, are outliers. We only have four of them down there on the ground floor. So those are the larger ones. Those are eight, ten.
Yes. I just want to know if any of you would live in those bedrooms that we are putting a three bedroom unit that is smaller than a studio. I, I, I'm just trying to get a sense and I think you guys are kind of trying to wiggle around the answer to my question.
No.
What would the square?
Not at all.
Okay, so let's try to get a really clear answer. What would the square footage be? And it's three bedroom unit for the bedrooms. I mean, is it fifty square feet? Is it?
It's nine, ninety square feet. So my point about the average of a hundred, it's ninety square feet. And that's not just on these three bedrooms. We have some of the, the two bedrooms. You know, that's a really typical bedroom size in a development project.
Well, a year development project.
I'm saying in development projects in general, including probably the four thousand units that I've personally designed in the city of Portland. So as an architect, I know that floor plan design itself is way more important than the size of the unit. This is my area of expertise. The one bedrooms are larger, the two bedrooms are very close. But this is what, this is, this is definitely my area of expertise. The bedroom, the three bedroom, they're talking about, they're very functional. They have three distinct bedrooms, all with operable windows, and the same kitchen and living area as the market.
All with windows, doors, et cetera. I, and I, I, I just, I just, I just, and we've been talking about this at city council for much longer than six months. We've been having this conversation for the whole three years I've been here. And, and, and we've seen these kind of proposals in the past, but honestly, I've never seen one this outrageous and egregious in my, in my humble opinion, that we would have a three bedroom unit. I'm, I'm thinking about what the family experience would be in a building.
Yeah, if you'd like to talk about that, because I, I have, you know, I signed up to testify as well. Though I do have some comments about when you're looking at a development project, and you talk about the functionality of the unit plan and the layout. You can have a large unit that isn't very functional. There's not space for living furniture, dining areas, et cetera. So like, it's really important that that's where I lean on that statement about as an architect, this is what I'm doing. Building design and unit layout is way more than just a number on page. It is flow, it's natural light, it's size, configuration of a bedroom itself and storage. In addition to that, this project in particular is one of the most notable and exciting aspects is the amount of shared space in the building that's open to all residents and their guests. Like all the units have shared access to protected outdoor area at grade. There's a co-working lounge. There's a large fitness room. There's a rooftop deck with a kitchen and a bathroom. All told, this building has six thousand square feet of indoor and twenty seven hundred square feet of outdoor common area that's dedicated to residents. So in a building that all of the units are a bit smaller than average, what this development does in particular is expand on shared experiences as well. So that can't be discounted in, in a, in a policy or in a general square footage of a unit.
I appreciate that, Carrie. So I have a question to follow up on that. So if I'm one of the family units and I have three small children, my experience is going to be a lot different in that building than the singles who are there to mingle and hang out and enjoy the environment. And, and it's not going to, and I don't think that me and my three children would be that welcome hanging out in those spaces with my little children with a whole bunch of adults who consider themselves in an adult building.
Well, I think what the issue that you're raising right now, Commissioner Hardesty, is in direct conflict with the spirit behind inclusionary housing and incorporating them in market rate buildings. The experience that you're talking about would rely, you would, you know, it sounds like that experience would prefer to be in a building was just dedicated to family units or include, or inclusionary housing, which
No, that, no.
are naturally going to have that integration.
No, but it's a significant difference when you have a hundred and thirty four units. I'm sorry, you got thirteen units and, and only five of them are, I mean, yeah, only five of them are family units.
Right. I mean, that, and that, again, that reconfiguration option exists. We are vested under that and that's, that's the policy. We've been tracking this project for many years. And if I can understand kind of the desire around the conversation to, to kind of weigh the merits of that, but the fact is you have a mix of unit sizes in this building. That's up to the developer. That's the right of the policy currently is to reconfigure and apply those, kind of frankly, those three bedroom units are the hardest units to find in the city. And you can't build a building at market rate with all three bedrooms to, to support that family. You are going to have to rely on the fact that you're going to have integrated inclusionary housing units in a market rate structure. And
I'm going to stop you, Carrie, because you have testimony to give. I'm going to turn it back to the mayor. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to get a couple of my questions answered.
That, Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, Mayor, I'd rather, I'd rather hear the rest of the testimony and then ask my questions then.
Okay, very good. So why don't we do this? Since we're sort of at the public testimony point, why don't we have Ms. Strickland go first? And Carrie, you can say whatever it is you'd like to say and, and give your prepared testimony in addition to, to the comments and questions you just received. So if, if you'll bear with me, Kealan will take Carrie out of order and then if you could go to the rest of the public testimony list, please.
Okay. I'm Carrie Strickland. I'm the founding principal of Works Progress Architecture, located in the Century Side since two thousand and five. And thanks for having me here today to talk about the project in an effort to support and approve this project's multi-program. And policy and design go hand in hand. I follow policy very closely and actively involved in helping shape policy within our city. We've established a design office that's lauded both locally and nationally for innovative and thoughtful architecture. We're a hundred percent woman owned business and know the struggle of creating meaningful intervention and contributions to our community. And as Paul has already testified, this building has a mix of micro units and studios, which makes up the overwhelmingly majority of all the units in the building. In addition, there are a number of ground floor loft units and a handful of two bedroom units in the building. And this mix makes the base count used in our reconfiguration of inclusionary housing. As I have mentioned, Commissioner Hardesty, and floor plan design is way more important than the size of the unit. And careful configuration on layout and flow, natural light, and then access to common area has a way more impact on livability of any unit type, particularly in a building with small, than smaller than typical units across the board. You have a development team that is committed to the project and committed to upholding the spirit of integrated inclusionary housing. Providing the livable three bedroom unit within this building results in a healthy mix of folks looking for the affordability of a small unit and the missing three bedroom units that are often excluded from market rate buildings. The three bedroom unit is very functional. It has three distinct bedrooms with operable windows, the same kitchen area as the market rate units. And then one of the most notable and exciting aspects of this opportunity is that all the units, regardless of their designation, have the same access to an amazing amenity package. And I'll repeat the numbers again, but it's a total of six thousand square feet of indoor common area and a total of twenty seven hundred square feet of outdoor common area that is dedicated for all the residents and their guests. This project has focused on providing those exceptional amenities to offset small unit footprints in the building as a whole. And this approach applies to all the units in the building, not just the affordable units. As I've testified, there's more to livability than square footage. And the quality of this project and the positive impact it'll have on its inhabitants will soon speak for itself. I urge you to consider all of these factors when you're considering your approval for the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Kealan, how many folks do we have signed up?
We have four people on the line to testify.
All right, very good.
First up, we have Noel Johnson.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Morning. Can you hear me?
Yeah, loud and clear.
Great. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for considering my testimony. I'm a forty two year old citizen who's worked with talented teams to create a couple thousand new housing units over the past two real estate cycles. And I'm also impressed by your directness and results oriented focus this morning. I've been listening for the last hour and a half. It's pretty cool. And in this light, I think it would be helpful to start by reminding us all that our city has less housing production going on right now through our land use system than at the lowest point of our last recession. And we all remember how severe those shortages were and how it really led to a crap-tacular situation just a few years after that. And I mention this because the project in front of you is
Alert right there, extra credit.
Thank you. Thank you. Just wait for it. I'll bring it down to the end. The, but the project in front of you today is really one of the only handful of projects not funded by the public that was advanced over the past year's recession and pandemic. And so I think it's reasonable to be thankful for the persons who risked their money and time to keep this thing going. And I think it's important to consider this project amidst, you know, our broader context today because it's a great opportunity this morning for basically like, from you guys, a thank you for producing more housing, we need it expression. Because that would let others thinking about resuming housing production investment efforts in our city to know they can count on city leadership to honor the city's existing rules. This being a norm, a notion that is pretty fundamental to liberal democratic norms. And when we violate that, it leads to pretty crap-tacular outcomes. So you can send a strong signal that our city's leadership understands ninety percent of all of our city's new housing emanates from private sector protagonists like Paul and that you guys are not performative but pragmatic leaders. Thanks for your time and listening and I hope you have a good day.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up, please, Kealan.
Next up, we have Michelle Planbeck.
Welcome, Michelle.
Can you hear me?
Yep, loud and clear. It's good to hear you.
Fantastic. Good morning, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Michelle Planbeck, and I am here today as a registered representative of Oregon Smart Growth, a group of civically-minded, responsible developers, investors, and allied industries that works to create a more economically, socially, and environmentally sustainable future. This project's re, unit reconfiguration has been approved by the Portland Housing Bureau, and the project team has relied on that determination to move forward. Oregon Smart Growth has been engaged on the draft inclusionary rules, uh, inclusionary housing rules and the updated draft in, inclusionary housing administrative rules that specify reconfiguration sizes that are being shared with us today um, are being shared with us for the first time, and we look for, forward to further commenting on them. The project before council today and its reconfigured units meets PHB's current inclusionary housing requirements. To date, just five affordable, family-sized three-bedroom units are on the market under the inclusionary housing program. This project will provide another five three-bedroom units, doubling the number produced over the past five years. These units will be affordable to households making up to 60% of median family income. For a four-person family, that's about $55,000, or two adults working full-time at minimum wage. Even though demand remains high, Portland is underproducing housing at all levels of affordability, which is increasing the cost of housing for everyone. One reason for this underproduction is developer and investor caution about the Portland market due to lengthy permitting timelines and complex regulations, which lead to significant uncertainty. A council decision to reject this project's multi-application because it disagrees with PHB's inclusionary housing determination would further erode faith in this market at a time when we can least afford it. Thank you for your time today.
Thanks, Michelle.
Next up, we have Kevin Clark.
Welcome, Kevin.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. Thank you for having me. Uh, Kevin Clark, resident of Portland, 929 Southeast 16th Avenue, apartment four. As a member of the development community and a person who has, uh, personally been involved in the development of two buildings under the IH rules that use the reconfiguration to three-bedroom units, uh, I hope that the council finds the time to support a unit uh, and a reconfiguration that is under the rules and provides the most needed type of housing that the market does not. For members of the community that, and provides a stable home in high-cost areas. Uh, I think it would be extremely damaging to the city's housing market and for the production of housing for the city to reject a developer's good-faith efforts to work within the established rules and norms. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Um, that concludes, oh, no, I'm sorry. One more person. Sorry about that. Sam Rodriguez.
Welcome, Sam.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yep, you sound good.
This, I, you know, one year later and I still can't get used to this. So, uh, good morning, Council, um, ma, as Mayor and, and Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Sam Rodriguez. My address is 720 Southwest Wash, uh, Washington Street, uh, 97205. I'm, I'm the head of Mill Creek Residential and multifamily market, multifamily residential developer. I head the division, uh, the Portland Division. I, I don't head the whole company, just the Portland Division. I'm also one of your design review commissioners, so, uh, but I'm speaking today more of with my developer hat, although it's hard to separate the, the other side of, uh, of the things that we do. There, I'm, I'm here for you to, to, to express the need to support projects that follow the rules. This project has gone through a land use process through Design Review Commission. We reviewed it. Yes, it has an unusual unit mix. I mean, and that's part of the kind of concerns and that, uh, that have been expressed. But it went through its design review com, through, through the Design Review Commission and in, and through that process, we look at, uh, not only the units to, to a degree, but we look at how that building interacts with this environment. And that is part of the reason why this probably created this unusual four-bed, four-one bedrooms on the ground floor that are outsized. So, bear in mind that, you know, there's more to just unit size to a building. There's how it, how it, uh, it works with the context. So as that, um, as, 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 as that review process happens, some anomalies might occur. It just happens that this building has a very unusual unit mix. This, this unit mix, however, if you think about it, the size of the unit is actually creating an organic, uh, affordability into the, into the building. So keep that in mind that these small units, which are throwing these averages into sort of disarrayed in people's minds, are actually affordable units. This is how Europe, people, uh, can afford to live in Paris in some places because they live in tiny little units or in other cities in the US. So I think you need to take that into account when you look at this prop, prop, process, um, at this project, at this community. These homes that are being produced are necessary and needed. And we, the more we produce, the more we will control costs overall, not just for the 60% and the 80%, but for the 100 and 120 and 140%, all of which need some help. The, um, so, so I, I, I beg you please to re, to consider approving this, which has made, this project has met all of the, all of its requirements, both from a land use perspective as well as from an inclusionary housing perspective. The other thing that I want to echo some of my previous, um, the previous, previous testifiers is that this, this event today made it all the way to Boston, San Francisco, and LA. I have three projects in the market right now, and I had three investors call me freaking out. What's going on? We, are we gonna have projects, uh, our projects approved or not? You said it was okay, that it will get approved. Please make sure that, you know, I, I, you know, just bear in mind that the, the, the decision you make today has a broader consequence than just this project. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. We appreciate that perspective. Thank you. Does that complete public testimony, Kealan?
Yes, that completes public testimony.
All right, very good.
Pardon me, Mayor. There was, uh, there was one other individual, uh, to participate in the invited testimony. Is it possible to have her give some remarks?
Yeah, this is the time.
Great, thank you. That's Alison Reynolds.
Welcome, Alison.
Hi, thank you so much. Um, I, uh, apologize. I had signed up as public testimony, but then also on this, so either way, this is great.
You figured it out. It, it worked.
Great. Um, so I, uh, I'm Alison Reynolds with Stole Reeves, and I am land use counsel for the applicant on this project. And we just want to stress how important it is on this project and all of the other inclusionary housing projects that will come before you that council and the housing bureau make decisions based on the clear and objective rules that govern inclusionary housing. And as Commissioner Ryan alluded to, council enacted the program in 2016 after extensively studying how to best balance the goal of creating affordable units without deterring investment in housing in our city, since low housing supply naturally leads to price increases over time. And council adopted a package of necessary offsets or incentives, including the multi-tax exemption, SDC exemptions, and a density bonus, because council found that these were necessary to ensure the program was balanced and met the city's goals. And council was clear that these offsets are a key component of the program. Under Title 30, which is the Inclusionary Housing Code, if the incentives are not available, a project is not required to comply with inclusionary housing. That is not the outcome we are seeking today for this project. Analog PDX is designed to provide a mix of small, lower-priced studio units and family-sized inclusionary housing units, and we want to move forward with that project design. It's critical for developments to have certainty about what the rules are that apply to a project early in the development process. The housing bureau and this council have been clear that the rules at the time of application for a project are the rules that apply. It is not legal or practical to apply draft rules that are not yet adopted today to a project that applied for land use review in 2019. Under the city's code and administrative rules, multi is available for projects that meet the inclusionary housing program requirements. Those program requirements are clear and objective standards and allow reconfiguration of IH units to create more family-sized units. The analog PDX project meets the requirements of the inclusionary housing program, which should be the only consideration in approving multi. That all said, we strongly support council's efforts to revisit the inclusionary housing program and make sure that the rules are creating the desired policy outcomes. However, changes in the rules must apply only to projects that file after a rule change is implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan, then, uh, Mr. Del Bicchio again.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, I want to start off by, uh, remind everybody this is a first reading. I want to acknowledge that it's a great dialogue that we're having. It would be odd if we weren't having this conversation, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Dobakio being here directly. And, um, I see your hands up. I'm sure we'll have a little dialogue coming up real soon. So, uh, I also want to acknowledge the leadership of Director Callahan in providing where we're going with this. Uh, when you implement complex policy and it becomes, um, action, uh, it's common, everyone knows this, that you discover kinks and you want to make it better. So, we're always in the world of continuous improvement, and that's part of why we're having some thorough dialogue right now. Um, I'm very aware of, um, some of the angst that you brought up about what it's like currently to move work in the city of Portland, and please notice we're actually, uh, have launched and are active in very difficult conversations in the permit improvement task force. It's a very riveting thing going on in the city of Portland right now. And we are looking at improving efficiency and quality of how we work with all of you as partners. So, all of these things come together, and now I want to just give you a little bit on why, when I first saw this, I had a reaction. So this goes back years, like 20 years ago, and I would say to people in the city council at that time that we're desperately in need of low-income housing for families, that we don't have enough two- and three-bedroom units. And I was on the school board a little bit later, and our enrollment was dropping dramatically, and all the units we were putting in affordable housing, especially in the central city, were studios and one-bedrooms. So, I always really look at projects to see if they have family-sized units. And so with that in mind, and I just started to, um, go deeper into the, uh, the size of the units and, you know, started to look at how big a bed is and would it fit in this three, in this bedroom in a three-bedroom unit. And then, of course, the, the disparity of the size of the three-bedroom unit compared to the one-bedroom unit. I actually, I think we're getting a lot of information about the, about the, uh, building itself. And, um, but I want to focus on these three-bedroom units because that's really what got everyone's attention, if you will. And I, I haven't seen the, I would love to see you put up, the architect perhaps could do this, a visual of the actual, uh, unit itself and the size of those bedrooms. And, um, is that possible to do that, Paul?
Uh, it is, and I, I, I could do it as well.
I just thought I'd take advantage of you being on the Zoom screen, and I'm staring at you, and I figured you might be able to do that. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I would love to, and I, you know, you know, I appreciate that you're thinking about all of this. It's very important. I, I would just like to add that.
Well, let's just lean on this bedroom size first.
Yeah, sure, okay. Uh, I'll, I'll dig it up and, um.
But my, my point is, and I, and Commissioner Hardisty was very, um, smart to, um, lay this out. So, you, you're building a, you're putting in a building with, with three bedrooms that should attract families, and you're near schools. All of this makes one happy. That's been a child and youth advocate for years. And yet, are these really built for families? Are these built for a reality show for, you know, singles that are going to be cramped in their little bedroom and then hang out, uh, with others? It's, it's a lovely idea, but I really want to focus on the mother with three or four children. And what would they be able to, uh, rent this, uh, unit? And would they find that satisfying? So that's why it's important to look at the actual size. Well, there you go. Uh, maybe we could, uh, blow it up, enlarge it a bit, especially when we look at one of these three bedrooms.
So, I, I would, may I respond to, um,
Yeah, as long as you, as long as you guide us to where one of these three bedrooms is.
Yep, yeah, we're looking at it. So this, if you can see my cursor, this is the unit here. But I would like to add that, um, part of what I'm hearing is that not only would you like us to provide family-sized affordable units, that part of the goal here would be possibly to provide family-sized market rate units for them to be next to. And I have to tell you flat out that that is not economically possible. Part of the way we are subsidizing the three-bedroom units is by providing micro-studios, which both provide, as Sam Rodriguez mentioned, naturally, affordable housing, albeit for a different demographic. But they also, uh, return a bit better, so it's an offset in a way. And so that this, in, in, in a somewhat, um, ironic way, the inclusionary housing law has led to micro-studios being more attractive as a market rate development product. And I would like to add that I would be happy to, and I'm sure any of the other representatives of the development community would be happy to have discussed this in the past or in the future. This version of discussing it at this hearing has cost me many thousands of dollars because getting an emergency phone call and then, you know, kicking into gear a legal team to, and an architecture team to represent me on a, on a, at a hearing. You know, it really, to me, it's a wonderful policy discussion to have, and I like to be involved in it. This doesn't seem to be the forum, um, but in any event, on the screen is the three-bedroom in question.
Thank you. And then you compare it to the two-bedroom. Is that right, next to it, to the left?
Yeah, there's a two-bedroom next to it. So this happens to be, this is a two-bedroom. It's not the only two-bedroom. Which, mind you, two-bedrooms are also family-sized units, so it is not, you know, to, to, every time we've guessed as to who's going to live in a building, we've been wrong. Older people live in studios too, and, I mean, it's a building that exists in a place and costs a certain amount, has access to certain amenities and certain transit. That's going to appeal to a very broad swath of the population.
Paul, but we're focused on the, the vision of how many families, low-income families.
So, yeah, this is a two-bedroom here next door. Um, it is approximately the same size. The bedrooms, in this case, this two-bedroom bedroom is smaller than the bedrooms in the three-bedroom unit. Uh, this one perhaps is a bit larger. It also has an en suite bathroom, uh, more of a primary-type unit. You know, primary and secondary, whereas, uh, in the three-bedroom, um, I wouldn't qualify, you know, maybe perhaps this is the primary down here, and these are two-secondary.
Hey, what a crazy.
And here's a, here's one of our larger studios next door. This is a 396 square foot studio. I'll pan over and you can see what a, what a smaller micro looks like. This is one that's 313 feet. So this is sort of our naturally occurring affordable product.
Right, and you mentioned it's had high ceilings, correct?
Uh, this is the second floor of the building, which, uh, this building is mostly typical on the way up. I can navigate to that, that lower floor just as a, as a comparison.
Three-bedroom, those beds, the, the, the three-bedroom units that you had up, can, can you actually even fit a double bed in there with, uh?
Yes, we, we test-fit queens in every, every bedroom. Uh, you could fit a queen in any, any bedroom. It, it may have one side stand, you know, nightstand instead of two, but they fit in every bedroom.
Yeah.
We don't consider this three-bedroom to be a substandard product by any measure, and Commissioner Hardisty asked the question whether we would live in it. I have lived in something this size. Um, I, so I, I mean, the answer is yes. I think it, it's a context question. I grew up in a place where living in apartments was very normal.
Yeah, so, and you said, do you know of families that have children, say, three to four children or five children that live in such, uh, units of this size across the city? Have you talked to them?
So we have, um, I mean, I, you know, I have to say that, you know, everyone plays a certain role in the development process and you know, we're, we're a pretty special purpose tool as a development company. We take the regulations, translate them into what we think is a product that's going to appeal to, uh, people that would invest in us and carry out a technical process. So, uh, the answer is no, I haven't, I haven't done any.
When you mentioned that, that's why I asked if it was like.
But we do have other, I mean, I, I have, uh, these rented at another building, and it's working. And, you know, and it, having kind of what was qualified as a single that might want to party could also be someone that's really hardworking and would be very happy to provide daycare or childcare. Sure. I mean, I think that, the, 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 the community that can be created by having these various types of demographics or, or, uh, people with different living arrangements, um, could be very productive. There's a group called Bridge Meadows in the city. Yes, you know, it is a reach to compare this to that, but one of the basic premises of, of that organization is to provide younger people with families with older people that have time and they, they can provide to each other, and I, I don't think this is that different.
Well, I think, um, I know the executive director, and they do have a lot Well, I think I know the executive director and they do have a lot of services that really connect the dots to provide such relationships. So I, I understand your comparison, but we do know that that has a lot of wraparound services that makes that come together. So that, that's, let me ask you this. So this is a first reading and I know my office would like to go to some of those buildings where families are living in such quarters. So we could just talk to them directly and get some more insight into this. I'm a big advocate for, again, family housing, near schools, near parks like this is. And I just want to make sure that we get it right. And so they actually will be populated with such families. And right now it's difficult to see in this layout if that is possible. So it'd be great to look at some comparables, like some of the testimony mentioned that said these are already rented out and see some examples of families in these units. And again, I want to say how important it is that the Housing Bureau has been listening to this feedback and is adjusting criteria. I think that's just good government. And I also think it's great government for all of you to come today and have dialogue with us. I know it wasn't on your schedule and, but it's here we are. And so there's a lot of new people on the council and we really want to continue to increase our housing stock. And we want to make sure that it's values driven for the families in Portland that attend our schools. And so that's why we're having this conversation. So I appreciate you being here today.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Paul. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Maps.
I have a couple of quick questions for staff. Let me start with Director Callahan and I apologize if these are simplistic questions. This is a relatively new territory for me and this looks like a complicated project. Just so I'm clear, did the project before us today comply with your rules and did they go through the right process?
Yes.
And now actually I think I have a question, which is probably most appropriately answered by the city attorney. I don't know if we have anyone from the city attorney who is on this line, but if we do, I'd like to hear a little bit about the legal risk that this council may take on by turning down this proposal.
Sure. All right. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, great. Well, for obvious reasons, I'm always a little bit hesitant to lay out all of our legal risk in a public forum. But as I'll generally advise the council that, you know, the authority to approve or deny this today does lie with council. That's a statutory requirement. And but it doesn't mean that, you know, council could act with complete discretion. So as your attorney, we'll just point you back to looking at the multi requirements that are in code and rule, and then those are require that the IH also, that the project also complies with IH. And those are also in rule and code. So, you know, if, if council were to stray from those requirements, it would create legal risk for the city. But, you know, I would have to do an offline evaluation of councils, why council might be denying the actual application to really give a full legal analysis if that decision would be permissive under the actual rules and code.
Okay, thank you. And I think I, certainly my staff would appreciate a briefing on some of the risks and consequences that would, might be triggered by rejecting this proposal. And now I want to go back to Director Callahan. Just so I'm clear, how many new units of affordable family housing will this bring online if we approve it?
Thank you, Commissioner Maps. And this building has five three bedroom units that would be designated affordable for 99 years and affordable meaning at 60% area median income. So the developer has chosen to go deeper with affordability. They're only required to to comply at 80%, but they have chosen to go down to the 60% option, which reduces the amount of units they have to provide because we have made a policy choice that we're trying to get to deeper affordability, even though we are not allowed under state law to require deeper affordability than 80%. So it's five three bedroom units.
Thank you. And if we do not approve this proposal, how many new units of affordable family housing are we going to bring online?
I think that would really be the developer's option, but my, my assumption is, and I don't want to speak for, for Mr. Dovacchio. But he, the development is not obligated to then comply with inclusionary housing. And so they would be relinquished of all responsibility. And my, my assumption is a rational actor would not then make a commitment of affordability when they were not receiving the incentives and to offset some of the, the costs of providing the affordability over the 99 year period.
Thank you, Director Callahan. And I see a bunch of hands have popped up. And I just want to give my colleagues on council a framework for how I'm thinking about this. I recognize that these bedrooms are small. I think that we've all learned that and I congratulate the Housing Bureau for proposing new rules that will preclude this kind of development. But as I look at this today, one of the other things I'm thinking about is that single mom in Portland with two kids who is just looking for a house for her kids. Wants to have a door where they can close the door at night and know they can be safe. And it really breaks my heart that we might do something today that might preclude that.
Thanks.
Thank you, and I will cede the floor.
Thanks, Commissioner Maps. Appreciate it. Adriana, I see you have your hand up.
All right, thank you, Mayor. My hand was up earlier. I forgot to take it down. My apologies.
No problem. Commissioner Hardisty.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Director Callahan. Director Callahan, I, I think you may have already answered this question, but I'll ask it again. So if in fact the council chooses not to support this proposal, then the developer has the option of moving forward without including the three bedroom units or doing the three bedrooms at market rate or whatever else the development wants to do. Is that accurate?
Um, I, there, I do, there will be some complications, I think, for this development if they do not proceed with inclusionary housing. There are bonuses that are attached, floor area ratio bonuses that are attached as an additional incentive. And so it is.
Would have an impact.
It will have an impact that will need to be determined for the developer themselves. And I think Mr. Dovacchio could explain to you what those issues are, but they are, they are, they are ready to proceed. And this is one of the final steps to the development of the building. And so denying, we had contemplated, it is why we, we had, we had not contemplated when we drafted the original inclusionary housing code, a situation that an individual multi would be denied, but we did contemplate at some point that we would reach the overall cap. If you may recall, we've agreed on a cap with the county about the amount of tax exemption that can be provided. And so that's why we set the trigger in the code that said if, if the tax exemption wasn't available, then it, then the project wouldn't have to comply. But we, we anticipated that more as an announcement to the entire development community that we had reached the cap and we would not be able to use inclusionary housing for some period of time. But I believe it will be a complicated situation for the developer if council is to deny the multi.
Thank you. And I, and Director, we've had this conversation quite a bit over the last three years and we've had other projects that we've looked at mind boggling, very similarly, because we're attempting to mix families and singles in an environment that we think will not create conflict. Or that somehow everybody's going to live homonit, just sending kumbaya in the process. And we know that when we have young children in buildings that there are complaints, especially from singles who are unaccustomed to the noise that children make. We've learned a lot in a time that multi has been in place. And what we continue to learn is that we don't have enough access. And, and let me just say, it's just not a bedroom. It's actually being able to be comfortable in your home. Right? Just because you have a three bedroom apartment doesn't mean that you can be comfortable. You can go to the open spaces in your apartment complex. Right? So we don't all have the same experience of comfort when it comes to open spaces and buildings. We continue to learn from this program and we give away a very minimal amount of tax dollars and in return, what we get is property that is quote unquote affordable for 50 years, 99 years, sorry. I guess my last question is, so if this project is not approved, let me, in this community, clearly there's a need for three bedroom units. Right? You would agree with that, Director?
Completely.
I guess my concern is that we continue to pass projects that though meet the letter of the law, they don't really pass the sniff test when it comes to how are people living and thriving in places that we say are affordable. I heard the term that there were a lot of naturally affordable housing in this development. What does that mean? I, I, I don't see anything other than the tax reduced properties that could be even considered a low income units. What is, why are, are the other studios being referred to as naturally affordable units?
I will say, Commissioner, that was not a comment from the Housing Bureau, but the developer themselves. And so I would ask them to respond to that specifically, but I think, you know, and I, I believe that what they were trying to indicate is that, as you know, when the market builds smaller and smaller units, they rent for, for less, less money, frankly. And so sometimes, so sometimes the micro units actually charge less rents. And, you know, I would like to say that we know that there are seven other buildings that are potentially eligible for the rules in current development that are, would apply with the old reconfiguration rules. And the, I also just wanted to say, Michelle Plumbek is correct. She has, the, the development community has not seen the final administrative rules yet. And part of our challenge in adopting those rules was trying to look at the various scenarios that we have continued to see. And so wanting to make sure that we were not creating a similar situation to what I think council has indicated, they don't want to occur anymore. And so it is, it is a very complex calculation on our part. And, and so our, our goal is to reach some of the same policy goals that this council has expressed on the, on the family unit reconfiguration option.
Thank you, Director. And Mr. Del Vecchio, I just want to say, I, I'm not without empathy and compassion for how long it takes to get a permit, how long it takes to go through the process, how long it takes to get a development ready to go. So I, I want you to know, I, I, I've learned a lot in my three years here about just how long it takes from the time you imagine something to the time that you're just about to break ground. And I know that that has been exacerbated by COVID and by economic devastation that we're currently experiencing in this community. So I just have one last question, which is, what do you mean when you say naturally affordable for your studios and one bedroom?
Yes, thank, thank you for giving me the opportunity to clarify that and expand on it. For us, it's very important because part of the core of what we build, which we also, we also build outside of Portland, is, is building units that we believe to be less than market value for market rent for new buildings, comparable new buildings. So that, there are only a couple levers to pull to make something less expensive. You can move it to a different location. You can make it a different type of building. You can subsidize it or you can make it smaller. And we like to build in kind of transit oriented urban areas. And those usually come with codes that drive what you can build. So one of the last measures we have is making it smaller. So we build unit, buildings that include a unit, micro unit type. So when you see the average in ours of a, you know, it's a 356 square foot average for studios, that actually doesn't tell the whole story. About half of those are 300 feet and the rest are larger, you know, whatever, the, the opposite of that, you know, 400 feet. So in those 300 foot units, we have a, a building up on North Interstate near Killingsworth, where the cheapest of those are under a thousand dollars. That's inexpensive by market standards. And if you were to compare that to the 80% or 60% AMI rent for that unit type, it's very close. Right? There's, there's not a big gap there. So maybe we're under, just under 100% of AMI, which is generally affordable compared to other market rate options. So one, one option here, and I will put this out here as an alternative and you can tell me if you want it, is we can just ditch reconfiguration. I didn't ask for it. The city asked for it. We wanted to build what we want to build for market rate. We, we think the, the market needs. And then, then, as, you know, accompanying that is IH units, which we have integrated in the way that we thought was best trying to meet the policy agenda. We could build the 11 studios in two, two bedrooms as IH and just meet the non reconfiguration version or possibly 12 studios and one three bedroom, if that's possible. I don't, I don't know what it is, but I think, I think it is. You know, but what you'd get is less affordability because the difference between the natural rent for the studios and the IH rent is not very different. But, you know, Shannon's presentation showed you the difference between the three bedroom and the three bedroom market is very different. So, you know, the sociological stuff aside, which I'm not even going to try to have an opinion on, the economics really point to the three bedrooms being the better option.
Well, I appreciate you taking the time to be here today. I know that it's probably a bit frustrating for you to be here for this conversation, but you, you've actually helped answer some of my questions and I'm grateful for that. So thank you.
Happy to do it. And I really actually did appreciate the dialogue and hearing the several conversations before this one. Aside from spending a few thousand dollars I didn't think I needed to spend and casting doubt on an entitlement process that doesn't need it, it was generally positive.
Well, you were doing so well, sir. And now you're going off the edge.
Blew it up. I had to get it in. Sorry.
Hey, Paul, thank, thank you. Your participation today has been extremely well received. Thank you. You, you pride provided a lot of professional expertise. You provided a lot of context. And I, I really appreciate that. Thank you. And, and others who've testified today as well, Carrie and others have, have, have also provided a lot of really good context. So thank you for that. Colleagues, if there's nothing more on this, I will move it to second. Is there any further discussion or questions? This is a first reading. Sorry?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd just like to add a couple of comments at the end. I want to echo what you just said and I really appreciate the dialogue we had today. You know, we just want to keep adding units of affordable housing into our pool. And I think all of us want quality units that have a positive population results for low income families and mixed generation households, and especially in our BIPOC community. And, you know, Portlanders have entrusted us with subsidies and tax credits and zoning changes to responsibly allocate the resources to increase the housing opportunities for families and individuals facing these challenges. So I just want to thank my colleagues for the questions, the engagement on this item. This is exactly what a first reading is about. Thank you, Director Callahan and Matthew for being here and also to the analog team, Paul, Carrie, Allison, for your, for being available, period. And it was good dialogue. Thanks.
Thank you. This is a first reading of an on emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you, everybody for that. Next up is a slew of second readings, the first being item number 267.
Authorize a competitive solicitation and contract with the lowest responsible bidder and provide payment for construction of the Sunnyside South Labs South Reconstruction and Green Streets Project Number E10368 for an estimated cost of $10 million, $330,000.
Colleagues, this is a second reading. We've had a presentation and opportunity for public testimony. Is there any more business on this particular item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Hi.
Hardisty.
Hi.
Maps.
Hi.
Rubio. Wheeler.
Hi. The ordinance is adopted. Item 268 also second reading.
Authorize a competitive solicitation and price agreements for the urgent repair of sewer and stormwater systems for an estimated annual amount of $2,200,000.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Hi.
Hardisty.
Hi. I.
Maps.
I.
Rubio.
I.
Wheeler.
Hi. The ordinance is adopted. Item two sixty-nine, a second reading.
Amend management agreement with Kemper Sports Management, Inc. for Coldwood Golf Course for an additional 17 months in the amount of $2,500,000. For a total contract amount not to exceed $6,179,013.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ryan.
I.
Hardesty.
I.
Maps.
I.
Rubio.
I.
Wheeler.
Hi. The ordinance is adopted. Item two seventy, second reading.
Amend management agreement with Kemper Sports Management, Inc. for Heron Lakes Golf Course. For an additional 12 months in the amount of $2,500,000 for a total contract amount not to exceed $9,807,912.
Colleagues, any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ryan.
I.
Hardesty.
I want to thank Commissioner Rubio for her vision and, um, making these contracts be on the same schedule so that we could assess whether or not. What the future of these contracts could or should be. Uh, great leadership. I vote I.
Maps.
I.
Rubio.
I want to thank the bureau and our, and my team, um, and also, uh, golf manager Vincent Johnson, uh, for their helping and moving this forward. I vote I.
Wheeler.
Well, if I can't play golf well, at least I can vote well on it. Commissioner Rubio, thank you to staff. Thank you to everybody who gave us, uh, extensive both testimony and a better understanding of, of these issues in this contract. I vote I. The ordinance is adopted. Last but not least, item two seven one, please.
Approve findings to authorize an exemption to the competitive bidding requirements and authorize the use of the alternative contracting method. Of construction manager, general contractor for the Mill Park Construction Project for an estimated amount of $7,500,000.
Seeing no further discussion on this second reading, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Yes, I'm so excited for this project to get up and running for the students and families in the David Douglas School District. I.
Hardesty.
We'll be looking forward to the reports of how we exceed our aspirational goals on this project. And I look forward to, uh, updates, um, uh, on a regular basis to ensure that we are not resting on our laurels. I'm happy to vote I.
Maps.
I.
Rubio.
What I think, uh, Parks Capital Project Manager, Robin Johnson Craig, for her dedication to the Mill Park Development and to the community and all this work that, that she's done. Um, I'm proud that this is moving forward and getting us closer to delivering a new park to the vibrant and diverse Mill Park neighborhood in East Portland. It'll be a great place for kids and adults to, uh, play and enjoy healthy activities and build community. As Robin shared last week, Parks has had success in using the construction manager, general contractor contracting method as a meaningful and engaging. Approach to reach the DMW ESB contracting community. So I expect that Parks will continue to be, uh. A leader in supporting this, uh, with, and, uh, I'm eager to hear updates about how this project is going along with my colleagues and others to come. I vote I.
Wheeler.
Thank you for everybody who testified on this and staff. Thank you, uh, and Commissioner Rubio and your team. I vote I. The ordinance is adopted. That completes our business. Just a heads up, both Commissioners Ryan and Maps, the meetings we have scheduled have moved, just so you're aware. You can check in with your teams on those. Uh, we are adjourned until 2:00 PM. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Everything that's happened last week, um, and unfortunately, we're most likely not going to see the end of it soon. There's most, most likely going to be more names that we have to add to this list. So the work is 100% not done. And I'm not sure if even in my generation, the work will ever be done, but that's not the point. The point is to create the framework so the work can get done.
Luke Richter, thanks very much for joining us today.
Thank you.
Luke Richter is the president of Central Oregon Peacekeepers. It's a social justice activist group in Bend. We're getting. Different perspectives right now on the verdict yesterday in the Derek Chauvin murder trial. Derek Peterson joins us now once again. He's a captain in the Multnomah County Sheriff's Office and the president of the local chapter of the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives. Derek Peterson, welcome back to Think Out Loud.